Good evening, everyone. I call to order the September 12th, 2022 Business Meeting for the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
President.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Murawski?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now if you are online. The chat feature will be open for your requests, or we're going to leave it open, I think, till about 5:40 or so, in case anyone thought we were starting at 5:30 tonight. Please submit your affiliation, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any questions you might have. We have a slightly unusual agenda this evening because we're going to be spending some time with our governance coaches. We're going to be taking several important steps forward in our work to have clear measurable goals shaped by the community's vision and values that we can use to hold the administration accountable when it comes to outcomes for children. We're going to hold our Hearing of the Public first tonight so that it remains available to anyone who would like to speak at our meeting, and then we'll be returning to our regular business after the Governance Coaching section, as indicated in the published agenda. I want to thank board members and staff for their time tonight. I know this may be a longer-than-usual meeting. This was an option of last resort when we could not find a day when all of us could be together in the style of a retreat. So with that, we are going to move straight to Hearing of the Public. Each speaker will have two minutes, and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Once a request to speak has been granted, you'll be invited to enter if you're online. Please click the camera icon to go interactive. Please provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any question you might have. This request is consistent with board protocol, and we appreciate your help. In the unusual event that someone is not willing to follow this protocol, do reserve the right to end that person's time. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to speak. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the Welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Finally, we ask that your public commentary be respectful of all listeners. Thank you. For Mr. Hoying or whoever is running the online speakers, could you just do anything you can to pick up anybody who joins us between 5:30 and 5:40, though if they would like to speak and thought we were starting in our normal time, they have a chance to do so? If we don't have anyone, no problem, but we want to give everybody a chance. Okay? Thank you very much. Do we have any online folks so far? None so far. Okay, I have, I think, eight requests for in-person. What I'm going to do is I'm going to read the first three, and if they could come down in that order, it'll help us move folks through pretty quickly, and I'll try to keep reading a few folks ahead so folks can get ready. Okay, so our first three speakers tonight are going to be Jimmy Dollard, Tino B., and Thank you. You can start as soon as you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Dollard, and I'm with Cincinnati Socialists and in solidarity with the YAC. I'd like to comment on the decision of the renewal of the CPS contract with the Cincinnati Police Department. After decades of defunding public education and running it dry of any capacity to offer the care work necessary to create an inclusive, loving, and healthy environment for children, CPS has pigeonholed our imagination into two points: that violence is inevitable in schools, and therefore, the only solution is violence. This flies in the face of reality, which is that criminalization of being a child only perpetuates the very cycle that this contract is purported to address. Displacing a child from their school and education is violence. Displacing a child from their friends and family by enrolling them in the criminal justice system is violence. It has been statistically proven that cities and states that invest more into a carceral structure, such as police and prisons, have actually seen a higher rate of crime. It has been proven that the displacement of any group of people can drastically alter a community's ability to cope with the harsh realities we are subjected to on a daily basis. The systemic racism embedded in every facet of our daily lives, including education, will continue in perpetuity if we continue to rely on police officers as a substitute to actual restorative, care-focused work and intervention on behalf of the students. Police are a response to crime, and they can never prevent it. In fact, only statistics show that they perpetuate it by, again, displacing students, displacing communities, and displacing people out of the very structures that we failed to fund that would address these issues in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next up, we have Tino B.
I'm Tino. I'm also with Cincinnati Socialists, solidarity with the Young Activist Coalition. I also wanted to speak to punitive justice and restorative justice and say that punitive justice does not work, does not prevent unwanted behavior, violent behavior, crime, anything like this. Does not foster an environment where students feel that they are safe or cared for, where there is a threat of arrest at school, where they're supposed to feel safe and cared for. And like my comrade Jimmy said, it does not prevent crime or anything. It actually perpetuates it. The money that is going to fund police officers in schools could very well go to systems to build into students, like counselors or any number of things, food for students, all kinds of things, that this money is just going to fund state violence. So it's hard for me to understand whether this decision is really... Do you all really believe that it's for the best interests of the students, or is there some other, something else going on?
Thank you, Tino. Next, we're going to have Bella Gordo, and I'm going to read the next three. We have Eliza O'Keefe, Sophie Glenn, and then Erin Derico.
Hi, my name is Bella. It's nice to see you all again. I'm the president of the Young Activist Coalition, and I'm here to speak about the fight to remove SROs from Cincinnati Public Schools. Today, you are voting to perpetuate the harmful and unjust criminalization of students by allowing SROs to remain in schools without any accountability or supervision. Despite years of the public telling you about our concerns and the distrust of the SRO program, you're all now choosing to ignore us and the alarming data surrounding the program. To remind you all, the SRO program, combined with punitive discipline, forces 400 students each year to be entered into the criminal legal system through arrests, referrals to law enforcement, and other methods. We will not rest until the contract between Cincinnati Police Department and Cincinnati Public Schools is dissolved and replaced by comprehensive or sort of justice policy and clear guidelines on law enforcement intervention in schools. This new contract between CPD and CPS still gives no control to the district over their SRO program. It does not implement any avenues to hold SROs accountable for their actions. To protect students from being entered into the criminal legal system in the school-to-prison pipeline, this district must first get rid of this flawed contract. After this contract is dissolved, it must take steps to end the relationship between the police department altogether. School racist officers have never belonged in schools. School safety has been in the forefront of our minds for the past several years as a result of tragic shooting after tragic shooting, but there is no empirical data to suggest that SROs prevent school shootings or even increase school safety. The only proof that persists is that the rampant racialized criminalization that SRO presence contributes to. This summer, it was reported that two Cincinnati Police Department officers used racial slurs against Black people, specifically Black children. Are these people that you also boldly claim belong in schools with children?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I'm a senior at Walnut. The legacy of the police within CPS is violence. That may not be what you think of in a literal sense as violence, but it would be disingenuous to find some other milder term. It is criminalization to detain students in their classrooms. It is dishonest and unsafe for police not to be held accountable to parents, students, or the district. The presence of cops in schools is a kind of violence against students. A vote for cops in schools is a kind of violence against students. You have seen the data. There is not another angle to the data. The data is concrete. To refuse to respond to the data is to deliberately ignore, even deny, a long-term and widespread problem in the district affecting the children in the district whose well-being is your responsibility, a responsibility you took on when taking on this job. You have heard our demands. Our demands are rational. Our demands come as students of the district. Our demands have not changed, and they will never change. We are demanding the dissolution of the MOU, but you know this. We would like to see accountability for SROs in the MOU, but you know this. The ball is in your court, so to speak. A healthy environment for your students for us is possible, but you need to commit to it.
Hello, my name is Sophie Glenn. I am the vice president of the Young Activist Coalition. This is my first time speaking at one of these board meetings, and I am here to repeat often, repeat what has often been said over the past two years by my peers, that as a student, I feel unsafe when I see a police officer in my school. I fear for the safety of my sister, who is a student just like me, a student of color. I fear for my peers, who are students of color. I fear for every single person that I interact with on a day-to-day basis because of the presence of SROs in our schools. And I know that as board members, you care about students, but as a student, I am telling you that this needs to change, and the passage of this resolution that doesn't change anything continues to frighten me and continues to frighten my peers. Our schools are a microcosm of our societies at a whole, and I fear that the introduction of violence into our schools just prepares society for more violence and prepares society for more, the continuation of harm done on our students. Students that are criminalized because of behaviors that are, behaviors that are shown because of their lives outside of schools shows them that they aren't safe anywhere, really. And I would, I want to believe that CPS can be a place where I am safe, and currently, I don't feel that. As Eliza said, the ball is in your court.
After our next speaker, Erin, we're going to have Gabe Conley, followed by Ian Wheatley. And then, do we have anybody who's joined us online? No? Okay, and so it's past 5:40. So we gave everybody, like, the normal 10 minutes to sign up? So we're great. Thank you.
All right. Hello, board. I'm Erin Derico. I'm speaking on behalf of the Young Activist Coalition, and today is a kind of exciting meeting, as we can see, because a lot of people are going to be paying very close attention to what happens here. Those watching at home might not be able to see this, but there are quite a lot of news cameras in the room today. Our organization spoke to a number of them outside just a little bit ago, actually. And what that means for you, board, is that the community is watching you tonight. They might not have been watching all that closely over the last two years that we've been begging you to address the data that we got from CPS and the Cincinnati Police Department, proving that more than 400 students every year, two daily, are entered into the criminal legal system through police referral and arrest in your schools, that Black students in this district are many, many times more likely to be arrested than their white counterparts, that students are being arrested and criminalized in their schools, in their classrooms, and in the places they are supposed to be safe and learn. You've known about this. Don't pretend you didn't. You saw the data from CPS and CPD that we gave to you. You saw the updated data, as a matter of fact. You've seen our petition with hundreds of signatures from community members. You've seen our rallies outside of this very building. You've seen our professionally analyzed survey conducted in association with the ACLU. You have done nothing in the face of this crisis, though. All you've done with any of that has been attempts to discredit it. You have known for years now that CPS has one of the most disastrous school-to-prison pipelines in the country, and you have done nothing. And today, you vote to affirm a memorandum of understanding that keeps cops in schools with no accountability, no mandate to report back to you, no requirement to de-escalate. But today, the community sees this. They will see you talk and talk and talk about how important student safety is while you vote to keep ruining student lives through criminalization. If I know anything about my peers, they can see through BS, and I promise you, they will.
We're going to invite up our next speaker. Hi, my name's Gabe, and I'm a student at CPS and a part of YAC. SROs are a negative part upon aspect of the school environment. They harm students by putting them into the criminal justice system and disproportionately affect Black and Brown students, an average of two students, I want to keep reiterating this, two students, two children, are added into the criminal justice system every school day. That's not justice. That's unnecessary punishment. If you guys really claimed to support students like you claim you do, you'd remove SROs and replace them with restorative justice.
I am Ian Wheatley. I'm a student at Walnut Hills High School and a member of the Young Activist Coalition. I'm here to talk to you about SROs. Why are there police officers in our schools from day to day? Are there firefighters and paramedics on site at CPS schools outside an emergency? Or more relevant, trained mental health professionals? These cops are trained to chase down hardened criminals, not deal with kids in schools. You wouldn't send a school counselor to arrest a robber, so why would you send a cop to do the job of a school social worker? I saw a sign as I was walking in the CPS building that said, "Preparing Students for Life." If schools prepare students for an overly punitive justice system with more support for police officers than mental health, then we really are preparing students for life in America, and that is really sad. The least you all can do is get CPD out of our schools and get qualified mental health professionals in. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so with no, just confirming, no online speakers this evening? No online speakers? Okay. So we'll move then to the next item on our agenda, which is a reminder of the three-month priorities that this board adopted back in August. I won't, I'll read them very quickly, which is to continue to move forward on our governance process, which we're going to be doing this evening, to lay out and adopt a process for our next strategic plan, to continue to monitor and improve transportation across the district, to support the successful passage of the renewal levy on the ballot in November, and to strengthen community relationships and improved parent engagement. So hopefully, you'll see us spending the majority of our time in these meetings on these priorities that are most important. My two minutes are up. And we will, we have on the following pages, if you're interested, at least some first pieces on how we're going to hold ourselves accountable with some more work that's going to happen there. We have 14 minutes before our governance coaches join us. I would like to suggest, and I would need a motion for this, that we move up the approval of our minutes to get that done, and maybe even with a following motion if we get that far, the committee reports, that we can just use this time to make progress against what's left. Can I, is there a motion to move the approval of the minutes up to tackle it next?
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Murawski. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Wonderful. So I'd like a motion, if I could, to approve the minutes for the special meeting for August 1st and the business meeting for August 1st.
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Murawski. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I unfortunately need to ask for another motion to move up the, let's try two of these, the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee, and then the Ad-hoc Boundary Committee Reports, so that we can handle those now before our coaches join us at 6:00. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Thank you, Mr. Murawski. Is there a second? Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Vice President Jones, would you please present the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee Report from August 5th?
Yes, thank you, President Lindy. I'd like to present to the board for your approval the report of the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee meeting minutes. This meeting was held on August 5th, and I know that it's, August 5th was a long time ago, but if you recall, there was an error, and I asked for it to be withdrawn from the previous meeting. So these are the revised minutes. I won't take up a long time. I do want to say that most of the meeting was involved primarily updates on previous subjects that the Student Achievement Committee had discussed, and I'm going to go through them, although I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail. Want to add that these minutes are online for people if you want to read the detail. We had a update on graduation, update and audit on our graduation, where we were provided the preliminary data for Cohort 2022. The only thing that I will say about that, it was helpful to see it, but the data was not, that was unofficial because we still had not included the data from summer school. So that is one of the things that we anticipate that will come up as part of the Student Achievement shift to the COW, and we will, again, review that when, at a more appropriate time. The, well, let me, let me add for that. There were several recommendations included as part of the graduation update. They are listed, 1, 2, 3, 4. There are about six updates, and part of the, when it comes up at the COW meeting, we did ask the superintendent to make sure that he reported on those particular elements. Okay, then we did an update on curriculum adoption. There were actually no recommendations or actions needed. It was just an update, like I said, on the world language adoption and the Montessori adoption. Again, the one commentary was that we are continuing to align resources. The world language adoption was actually in the two-year, in the second year of its piloted effort, so we'll hear more about that as we move forward. Then we had an update on alternative assessment for students with significant cognitive disabilities. Once again, it was only an update, no recommendations or actions taken at that time. And then finally, we had a discussion about the Iowa test for Walnut Hills High School. This was a specific request by a parent who had a personal involvement and investment in this. There was a pretty intensive conversations where the staff provided us with an overview of, number one, why were the Iowa, why the Iowa assessments were given, why is it used, how is it used? And then the superintendent also gave us an update on kind of where we are in terms of giving priority to students, and I won't go into that. I would defer to her, but I would defer to her at a time when we can present the information, again, to the entire board as part of the committee of the whole. And then finally, Superintendent Wright gave a very nice update on the teacher pipeline. As you all know, we have a national teacher shortage. We are experiencing the teacher shortage here in this district, but we've done some, the district has done some very good promoting around and encouragement around the teacher pipeline, and it also includes other types of positions like paraprofessionals and what have you. So the work continues to address that area, and we look forward to hearing more about it in, again, the COW meeting. And just for the knowledge of our public, the board did take action to merge the Student Achievement Committee with the Committee of the Whole, and we want people to know, because it's been, the question has been posed to me, Student Achievement did not drop the work of Student Achievement. It just shifted from a group of three board members to a group of seven board members, and the superintendent will be leading that effort in terms of presenting the information as asked for by the full board. So I submit my committee minutes as written and hope for approval.
Thank you very much, Vice President Jones. Do we have any questions for the committee chair? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, this could be for the committee chair or our superintendent. I have two items particularly. One is the 87% goal regarding graduation. My understanding is that's the state average. I wasn't sure when the district adopted that as our goal. I can't remember, very frankly, if we did that last year, or if this is a new and higher percentage.
Thank you. So we did do in the last COW, and I know that we had two board members that were in another meeting during that time, but in the last COW, we did do an updated presentation that included graduation rate with where we are right now. There's, it's a little more current than what we had at the time in August. So the 87% in talking to the team actually came from the state's goal. So essentially, the state's goal starts at 87%, and that gets you one star. And so the goal, the thought was that that was adopted, or that was decided on, and I'm not sure exactly who decided it, but that was decided on as the district because the thought was that we at least wanted to get, you know, on the list and give a point for it versus none, even though one star on an A to F system has changed. Now it's a five-star system, and on the one-star system, a star, one star is still an F.
Yes. I just, I just was really interested. I didn't recall that we had adopted the state standard. I have no problem about doing that. I think that's reasonable, but I don't know that that tells us how close we got to whatever the initial target was.
Right.
From the previous administration, but I just, I just needed that point of clarification. Don't disagree with it at all. But I do have a problem with, I continue to have a problem with the decision to go to the Iowa test. Ever since we've gone to the Iowa test instead of whatever the previous test was, every single year, and two of those years have been COVID years, so extraordinary years in and of themselves, we have had a number of students and families basically not be able to come into the Walnut experience and program. And I think we've expressed it publicly any number of times about concerns about the Iowa test, similarly to the issues that we, the board talked about many years ago, when we were having under-identification of gifted or near-gifted because we were using a particular test. And when we changed the test, indeed, we were able to start to enroll a whole school. And so, but the point of concern is that that RFP or that contract was supposed to be, at least by these minutes and by my recollection, the group that controls the Iowa test or has ownership of it, I believe that this was the last year, or last year was the last year we were going to be using it. And apparently, the administration within the Performance Accountability and Testing Department decided to extend its use for another year. Department decided to extend its use for another year.
Correct. And we're in a, we're in a, this is an RFP year across the board for the assessments, and I do believe that that was one of the reasons that there was the request to do the extension for Iowa so that you could get all of the assessments that we use as, as school-based assessments on the same schedule. The, we can look at in an upcoming, in an upcoming Cal, we can look at the presentation that we did do for Student Achievement, if that would be beneficial to just add a little more context and conversation to, to Iowa and kind of why that particular assessment was selected. The other thing I think that it also gives us opportunity to do is, as a district, we selected the cut scores for Iowa. And so there were reasons that we selected those cut scores, but we selected the cut scores. So I think that when we go back and look at the data, when we look across the board at the data, begin to do some cross-analysis between the students and how they scored on Iowa and how they're actually performing in the school environment, that might give us another set of information to look at. So we can add that as a topic as, as an upcoming Cal if that's the will of the board.
Yeah. I'd, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Can I, can I just add something to that? And it is reflected in the minutes, this, there, it was told at the, during the committee that at the time of the RFP, the Terranova test had not been nationally normed for quite a while, which caused concern about the validity of the scores. So that probably had some impact on the decision to RFP it in the first place. So I, that, that's just one additional point.
And I do recollect that, and that made sense at the time, but now that we have normed this to our local constituencies and our children and our teenagers, I have great concern about the value of Iowa and whether or not we're going back into the great, great exclusivity of Walnut instead of, how shall I say it, preparing kids to be able to do Walnut and survive Walnut and thrive. So I'm anxious, I was unclear that indeed the department within the administration could extend a contract. I didn't, I, maybe I missed it when we were talking about it, but thank you.
I think the point is well taken, and as the, I'm hearing what the superintendent is saying in terms of us revisiting it, and I think we can have a more detailed discussion about it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Member Bolton. Thank you, Vice President Jones and Superintendent Wright. Any other questions for either the committee chair or the superintendent on the report from the Student Achievement Committee? Okay. Hearing none, we are at 6:00, and so I think what I'd like to do is bring our governance coaches in to do that item on the agenda. Are there any objections to moving to that piece of the agenda before, we'll pick up the ad hoc report as soon as we're finished? We are, we just ran out of time at 6:00. So we will, we will pull you in first as soon as we're finished with this next piece. Great. Rob or Jeremy, can we bring in Cindy? And I think Ray might be there as well, too?
Cindy and Ray are on, that's correct.
Welcome, Ray. Welcome, Cindy. Delighted to have you both with us.
Hello. Good to be here.
Hello. Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you very much for being here. For people who have, who are watching this meeting and have watched other recent meetings, the context I provide here is our board decided over the summer to enter into a student outcomes-focused governance coaching model with the Council of Great City Schools, which is an organization that supports, I think primarily urban school districts across the country. And we're going through a process here to set some priorities that would have some very clear measurable outcomes over the next three to five years that we as a board would believe truly reflect our community's vision and values and that we could use as a tool for holding our administration accountable for students. So with that, we're delighted to have you, and I will turn it over to you all.
Great. Thank you very much. It's good to be here and very happy to be rolling with this process of drafting goals and guardrails for, for your district. So one of the things that each of you was given was an assignment around drafting goals and guardrails, drafting individual goals and guardrails that you found important by looking at both the data that the superintendent provided for you as well as the Alma report from when you did the superintendent search to, to look at what they collected as far as what might be construed as some of the vision and values of the community. And then as, as you know, as this process goes on, once you have drafted a set of goals and guardrails, you'll be going back out to your community just to, to do that outreach and engagement and to, to test those goals and guardrails to make sure that that was, that their vision and values were actually captured in whatever it is that you will be coming up with. Before we dig in, though, and I suspect you all have your, what you drafted individually with your nearby, but before we take those out, I do want to go back and do a little bit of review. And it's been, it's been a little bit since we've been there to do our two-day session with you all, so just want to do a little review and ask, what is it that you remember about inputs? Remember, we talked about inputs, outputs, and outcomes. What do you remember about inputs? And anybody can answer. And I can't see the whole room there, so, but go ahead and...
Helpful if I call on people, or would you like to call on people?
Oh, there, now I can, now I can see the whole room.
All right. So Cindy's going to call on anybody who would like to, like to share.
Yeah. What do you remember about inputs? Yeah. Mike. I see you, Mike.
I see you. It's good to see you. Resources and activities invested in a particular programmer strategy that are usually knowable. And I did know that, but I wanted to give you, I wanted you also to know that I have my papers with me at all times.
Nice. Yeah. So Mike has the SOFG manual with him. Thanks, thank you very much. Yes, they are resources knowable at the beginning of the cycle. Who owns the inputs? Who remembers who owns the inputs? When we were there, we rationed, we used this as a, we used a, I believe it was a baseball game analogy, and talked about the input of the game. Mike, again?
Superintendent, the coach.
Yeah, the coach, the superintendent, that's right. Say that again?
General manager for talking baseball analogy.
If we're talking, okay. All right. Yeah, general manager if you're talking baseball, but definitely, yes, the superintendent owns, owns the inputs. What do you remember about outputs?
The outputs are the results of a particular set of inputs that is usually knowledgeable in the midst of a cycle, and it's measured after the implementation of the strategy.
Yeah, that's right.
A little bit.
That's great. Yep. It's, you're welcome to have a, this is an open book, open book quiz always, so always welcome to have your materials there and in front of you as we do this work. So, so we've got inputs and outputs. So inputs knowable at the beginning of the cycle, outputs knowable in the midst of the cycle. What do you remember about outcomes and how they're different from outputs? Somebody I haven't heard from?
Mimi, Mimi.
Okay, okay. Is that Kareem?
Kareem, yes.
Hello.
So, you said outputs? I mean, outcomes, sorry.
Outcomes, outcomes, and then how are they different from outputs?
The impact of the programmer strategy that is usually knowable at the end of the cycle, and that is a measure of the effect on the intended beneficiary.
Yes. Knowable at the end of the cycle, a measure of the effect on the intended beneficiary. Okay. So then, what do you remember about student outcomes and adult outcomes? How are adult outcomes different from student outcomes?
I'll, I'll give that a shot.
Okay. Carolyn?
Student outcomes are measures of what the student actually knows or, are able to do.
Yeah, student outcomes are measures.
It's focused on, it's focused solely on the student.
Yeah, it's about what students know and are able to do. So it's focused on the students. What about adult outcomes? If that's what student outcomes are, what are adult outcomes? Mary, go ahead.
They are basically outcomes that are not student outcomes.
Yeah. So any other outcome that the school system produces that is not a student outcome is considered an adult outcome. And then student outcomes describe what students know and are able to do. So then we talk about goals, and what, what is special about a goal?
This is Carolyn. Goals are smart, meaning they're, I forgot the S, but anyway, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely.
So... Okay. And what else were you going to say?
I forgot. Go ahead.
So they're, they're smart, they're specific, measurable, achievable, and sometimes we hear realistic, relevant.
Goals are student, are focused on student outcomes, and they describe the board's top priority according, the timeline for which they are adopted.
Yeah, yeah. So they signify what the board's priorities are over the time horizon for which they're adopted. How many, how many do, how many goals is it recommended for a district to have?
Three to five.
Three to five? Anyone else?
Cindy, this is Ben. I also thought three to five was right, but please tell me if I'm wrong.
Not more than eight.
Wait, we go back, I think we had a discussion that five to seven.
Not more than eight.
Okay. So, yeah, so if you, if you have your Student Outcomes Focus Governance Manual nearby, you can look at page two, which is vision and goals, and you can look, look at the third item under Approaching Student Outcomes Focus. Does anybody have that near? I know Mike does. I know Mary has notes.
I have a couple copies here, too, if anybody needs one.
I have it.
You need it?
I have it.
Thanks, Mike.
So it says, "The board has adopted no fewer than one and no more than five goals." Allow for a greater focus, more allow for less.
Yeah. So no fewer than one, no more than five. And what, what does that mean around the greater focus? If, if that fewer allow for greater, greater focus, excuse me, yes, and more allow for less focus, does that mean?
We just have a limited amount, anybody or any organization has a limited amount of resources, whether that's time or funding or people, and so where are you going to point them at? And so if you point them at a fewer number of things or point, decide together that we care about, and if you do that with a smaller number of things, you have more to go after with, and if you do a larger number of things, you have less.
Yeah. Yeah. So in, in the context of limited, limited resources, when you have, say, 20 goals, how many goals do you really have? How many do you really think you're going to achieve, I guess, is the question?
Very few if none.
Yeah, likely none. And there's actually, actually research done by Covey, and this, this might be where some of the other numbers were coming into play. But an organization that adopts one to three goals is likely to achieve one to three goals. Three to five goals likely, likely three goals. And Ray, you might have to, you might have to correct me if I'm wrong here, but if they, if anything over seven goals is, the likelihood to achieve any of those goals plummets to nearly no likelihood of achieving them. So that is why we recommend no fewer than one, no more than five, and often, often that, that three, often we recommend landing on three, but one to five is, is within that range that, that the SOFG manual signifies. So when we, also when we talk about smart goals, what components do those goals need to have in order to be smart?
They need to have a target population, so what group of students are being focused on.
Yep.
They need to have a starting point or baseline, they need to have a target, and they need to have a date by which the district will hit that target.
Yeah.
And I'm sure I forgot something, but I'm not doing...
I think you only missed one thing. Does anybody know what that one thing is? So we said, I believe you said, yeah, go ahead, Brandon.
Specific measures of what you're actually measuring over, over that period of time.
Yeah, so that, the, are you talking about the instrument used to, used to measure?
Yes.
Whether it be, yep, yeah, whether it be the state test or what other, whatever other measuring stick you would be using for that. So they, then I think the only other thing missing was a starting date. So you always want to have a starting date with that as specific as possible, so generally a month and then the year. The starting point or baseline, so that starting number or percentage, the, the current reality. The ending point or target, so that's that percentage or number, which is where you want to be in the future. The ending date is signifying the time horizon, that, that point in, in the future that you're wanting that number to be achieved. And then the population, as Ben mentioned, and the population of students that, that the goal is referring to. And that also can be as specific as, as you wish, whether it be all students, whether it be by subgroups, grade bands, what have you. Are there any questions about that review piece before we move on?
Getting a lot of head shaking no here, Cindy.
No questions. All right. So in a little bit, I'm gonna, we're gonna take a little time with the goals that you did for your pre-work, but before we do that, I want to give Superintendent Wright an opportunity to just highlight, since you received the data as a piece of homework, I want to give her an opportunity to highlight any of the data in that packet that she provided, and also an opportunity to, for the board members to ask any clarifying, clarifying questions should they have them. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Wright if she's ready.
Sure. Thank you. So I provided in the data, essentially just an overview of looking at the data and just a way to look at what some of the numbers represented in terms of the data. And thinking about it, one of the areas that I will call our attention to, the first couple of slides that we did review, this is just specifically from our state assessment data. This is right from our report card that covers both ELA and math. All of this information is on our public site, our...
All of this information is on our public site, our Ohio State site, so just to know where the data is coming from. And so we have not only our assessment data for the Ohio State test, but also our EOC data as well for our students specifically in reading and math. So those were the areas that we pulled out to really target and focus on those. We do have the other data included, but the overview specifically was around reading and math, specifically because graduation requirement courses for our students, for our high school students, there are two tests that they have to pass in order to graduate. And those two gateway courses or gateway assessments are Algebra I and English II. So that's where that particular data came from. The other thing that we saw in section two, it's a, the past five years of graduation data, so that we would be able to look at that. We also know from our state site, the way that graduation rate is calculated, it is a year removed. So the information that would be a part of our report card for this year would actually be last year's data, so forth and so on. And then just some other information that I was able to provide for, for, for the team around completion rates for our assessments, that's in the appendix, but that's really important because one of the conversations that we hear sometimes is the, the data looks like it does because not all of the students test. So I did think that it would be beneficial for us to look at a cross-reference when necessary of the actual number or percentages of students that tested compared to those that could test. And then we also have attendance data and discipline data included as well. I don't, I didn't know if you wanted me to cover any highlights or just, just what was included in the data.
I think if there's any highlights that you'd like to, anything that you would like to point out, that, that is.
Sure, sure. So I really shared the highlights that I thought that were really important for us to take a look at in the overview in the document, just a couple of things to call out. The collective concern around student performance. And I know that we're coming off of a year of, of where we've, you know, where we've had COVID, looking to be responsive to that. But I also was able to go back and look at data prior to COVID and where we were. And, and we really also want to think about what that cohort data looks like. Start with students that were 17, 18. Rob, I don't know if Ray's microphone or, or, is Cindy's microphone? Okay, Cindy, we can hear you.
Oh goodness.
Yeah, okay, great. So I just, I kept seeing people look around, so I thought I would just share it with you, Cindy. You're among friends. So the one thing that I did think was important for us to call out in terms of the data is even if we go back to cohort data and how students have performed in the cohort, I understand that we're not comparing apples to apples, i.e. we know that we may have different populations of students from one year to the next, but when you begin to look at, for example, last year's eighth graders and where they performed, and then look back three years before that, when they were fifth graders and where they performed, you're able to see the consistent decline as you look from year to year. So it's not just that one moment in time for what we saw in data last year, but across the board, especially in math. So highlight areas, you know, called it out right here, 16% of our students are performing at proficient rate for eighth grade. So that's an area for us to look at. We do have some eighth grade students, students that take Algebra I, but for the most part, our ninth grade students are the ones in Algebra I. And even equally alarming are the, are the proficiency rates of our Algebra I students. When you look at the percentage overall, but then pull out the actual number that that represents, that is something that's really alarming as well. So did want to call those two out in terms of math. Reading, same, same noticing. And so we're operating with not quite 50%, less than 50% in reading for our students that are proficient based on the state assessments. And we can have our, our different conversations around the state assessment, but I think that that's the measure that we've determined that we're going to use to determine student outcomes. And, and then even less or more abysmal when we start to look at math.
Did anyone have questions for the superintendent on her data? Clarifying questions about what was presented?
Head shakes. Eve, go ahead, Ms. Bolton, please.
Thanks for, frankly, I thought it was a great summary and, and as you said, alarming in many ways. Vice President Jones and I just came back from a, from a symposium, so to speak, and one of the data folks in one of the sessions talked about how we have to recalibrate and, and kind of look again as a result of the COVID experience nationwide and certainly within our own district. And I am interested to know, because part of the message that this person, and they were with a private firm, probably wanting contract business or something to help us understand the data. And certainly we're not going in that direction, but I, I do think it does beg the question as to how we start. I know our treasurer and previous administrations as well like to look at the past three years as we try to make plans for the next three years. And the pattern's been so disrupted, how are we going to be approaching that? And maybe that's too broad a question, but I'd like to hear the superintendent's response to that.
Actually, I think it's a great question and one of the reasons that this conversation is so timely. Because while, while we go back and look at previous trends, you're right, we're really starting with the baseline from this past year. And honestly, this year becomes even more of a baseline because we're hopeful that this year we won't have any of the disruptions that we had to have last year. And so I need to knock on something, I think, when I say that, just in case my health and safety person is looking at me when I say that. So, you know, we just want to make sure, we're hopeful that we don't have any because there were some disruptions last year as we were coming off of that, that year of discontinuity. So we have to ground ourselves and we have to decide as a team, what, where is the right spot to start? You know, looking at the data, what is that, the baseline from last year? Using that as a North Star to some degree, or is it the baseline that we're looking at from this year? I don't know that we, we have, we, our students cannot afford for us to wait to do strategy around improvement for them until we get that concrete source, but just recognizing that it's, it really is something that's important. I think that that helps us frame how long of a period we're looking at. So are we really looking at that three-year period? Or are we looking truly at a three to five-year period so that we're also having the conversations around recovery?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike.
I appreciate, it's all good. I appreciate Ms. Bolton asking that question. And it just, as you were asking a question, as Mr. Craig and I, I was looking on a screen, we were looking at One Piece data. I just want to highlight this piece and why it's so important for those who maybe don't think in wonky policy. Look at absenteeism. In 2019, 2020, chronic absenteeism is extraordinarily low because people didn't have to be in a building and we didn't know what was going on. And we know that that's, if we're being fully transparent, we know that this is probably not entirely accurate because there were a lot of people that weren't logging on. And the next year it skyrocketed, which makes perfect sense to me because some people decided not to come back. People didn't know the policy, whether or not to enroll in the digital academy or coming into school. I think we were all trying to figure it out. And then last year, it's real high, where it was even maybe more confusing if you were transferred. My point is, is I just wanted to give a tangible example of why this is important. Because 2019, 2020 school year, everybody was in school, according to this data. That's not, that's not accurate. So anyway, I just appreciate that we're going to have the conversation about all the metrics.
If I can also add into your point with that, when we pulled out the data that we are reviewing to that point, we, we did not include data from the 1920 school year because the assessment, because COVID, most of us closed with COVID March of 2020, which would have been the 1920 school year. And then school districts that did do the assessment, the assessments weren't counted across the board. So our district didn't have the collective assessment. So that's why you see on the document a break in terms of the, the years. You don't see data for that particular year and that's the reason. But to your point, that also makes it equally concerning is we know that our, our grade data, our, our report card data is embargoed right now until the end of the week. We anticipate that the state is going to release that data either Thursday or Friday of this week based on the most, the most recent information we've been provided. And one of the conversations that they're looking to have around that is around chronic absenteeism and what chronic absenteeism has actually done to the overall assessment window. So, and I think the other part is that we also have to re-educate or I think re-educate may be the best word because there were so many concessions that were given around attendance and those kinds of things. You know, people have, have lost the understanding that 18 days is chronically absent. And so if you're absent more than 18 days, it's not a matter of whether the days are excused or not. It's if you're absent those days, that goes into that chronic absenteeism number. So that's something that we want to make sure we share as well. Do we have these so that the public can see what we're talking about? Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, from Dr. Moffett, the question was, are they posted so that the public can see them? They're on board docs for sure. Are you suggesting we pull them up here?
Well, yes, I, I mean, I think it would be kind of fair, it is, I think it would be kind of fair if we could at least pull up something so people could see what we're talking about.
Is that a possibility, Rob? They're the ones, yes. It'll be a PDF where the first page says Cincinnati Public Schools Student Data Analysis at the top. Thanks. Other questions, a member Bolton?
Yes, a follow-up on Member Morosky's point and specific example on the attendance piece. That is true too for graduation.
Yes.
The graduation rate is relatively meaningless frankly, because, because of COVID, lots of adjustments were made, properly so. I mean, we were in a national, international emergency. So I think that's kind of important to, to point out as to where we start on the baseline, actually, for our SMART goals. But look to guidance from the administration on that.
Okay, Rob, if you could just pull up like attendance, I think that's the one that, I just want the people to be able to see what we're talking about. I don't know what page that is, what page is that?
It's in the appendix.
Yeah, Rob, if you flip to the appendix, the pages aren't numbered, but it's.
So they can see what we're talking about.
It's the third to the last page. It says attendance data at the top. Keep going, keep going. There it is. That's it.
Interestingly enough too, we spend probably the most money we spend on getting the kids in attendance, whether it's social workers or whether it's all kinds of other opportunities we have to make sure that they're there, be it digitally or, or in person. So it's, it's talk about return on investment, we can't keep the kids there.
Chairman Lindy, if I, if I may add, if I may, as a national context.
Yes, please. Thank you, Ray.
I just wanted to share that the attendance information that you're looking at was also significantly impacted last year by COVID, last year and the year before. So if you recall that students and faculty were required to have mandated time away from the building as a function of quarantine, when exposed or when a family member was exposed to, to COVID. So one of the things that you're noticing about attendance as well is that that mandatory quarantine period, which, one of the things that we advocated for early last year was actually the CDC changing that mandate from 10 days to five days, but it was a mandated 10-day time away from the building. So that is going to directly impact your rates of chronic absenteeism, and that happened across the country. So just keep in mind, there's multiple things going on in the increase in these data points.
Thank you very much, Ray. Cindy, I think we're, any other questions on the, on the data or before we turn it back over?
If I could just make a comment.
Yeah, Vice President Jones.
I, I really appreciate this, this discussion at this level and also the superintendent's clarification because I think, you know, I struggled a little bit with writing my goals. And I think what this did is help to clarify and put some straighter, more direct parameters or descriptions around what was expected. So, and, and this was helpful. So I kind of wish we had had it before. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I'm just saying I really appreciate the clarity. And I know that I'm going to be one person who is going to do some revision to their goals.
Thank you, Vice President Johnson. Cindy?
Yeah, and so Carolyn kind of brought up what we're, what we're going to allow you some time to do next. I think, which is to now with, with some review on what components are needed for your goals and understanding that they, that your goals should be about student outcomes, so about what students know and are able to do. So focused on those areas and then have all of those components around a specific measure, population, starting point, ending point, starting date and ending date, then we'll give you some time to work on that. I think Ray maybe had one more, something else he wanted to add before we get into that.
Just wanted to make one more quick point about goals as you go into your conversation. And that is, keep in mind that goals are built around, really, I'm going to boil it down, boil it down to really three kind of major goal types. The first of which is improving rates. So much of what you have in your data shows the proficiency rate for students. And you're generally saying we want to go from X proficiency rate to Y proficiency rate, from starting point X to ending point Y. And that proficiency rate can be graduation rates as well, other types of rates. There's a second type of goal, and that is growth goals, which are quite different than proficiency goals. And so quite often, I think your students who might be performing at the basic level on your achievement test, and rather than saying that you want X number of students proficient, you may also recognize, well, we don't want our superintendent to lose sight of the students who are at basic. So we want them to, to go from, let's say, an average scale score of 600 to an average scale score of 630 or 640 or what have you. Because we also want to set goals around growth, around seeing our students continue to progress from a growth standpoint. And the last one is around reducing gaps. So you might also recognize that there are gaps between student groups within the district. And you may say that we want the difference between Group A and Group B to decrease from X to Y by a certain date. So there's really three different things you want to think about within goals. All of them have different purposes. All of them accomplish different things, but just something else you think about and consider as you begin your conversation.
All right. Thank you, Ray. Does anybody have questions for Ray on, on the comments that he just made?
Superintendent?
I actually do. So when I think about, like ultimately where we want students to go, as we're setting, as we're thinking about setting our own goals, are we, would we not think about setting goals around proficiency as the, as the end-all be-all or where we're looking to go with the understanding that, or the expectation that we're expecting to see improvement and growth as well? Like we, like they're simultaneous, but if, as we start thinking about that three to five number in terms of the goals, would we, would we think that, okay, we're just going to look at the growth piece? Because the growth piece, while it's important, is that ultimately going to get our students where they need to be when it's time for them to graduate?
So that is completely up to you as a board, is what you value, is what you think is important. Obviously, the two go hand in hand. So you can improve proficiency rates without experiencing growth in skill scores at some point. However, quite often what I've seen is that if I focus on the kids who are closest, the scholars who are closest to the proficiency cut score, I can actually improve the proficiency rate while still having, for example, my lowest achieving students in the district not making any progress at all. So I'm moving students who are close to that rate. I'm improving my proficiency rate, but I'm not necessarily improving all the students in the system equally. So it's really a discussion for you as a board about what you value, what you feel is important. But different goals, as I shared earlier, accomplish different things.
And I think also the other way to to think about how you can, how you can write a goal so that it is certain to address the lower, lower performing students is through, is through your, who you, what you define as your target population as well. So that's another way of, of ensuring that perhaps your lower performing students are getting that focused attention as well, so that, I would add that to the mix as well. Okay. Now, I think what we're going to give you a little, a little time right now to go ahead and take out the goals that you've already submitted, and now, having heard what you've heard in these last 20, 30 minutes about what the components of the goals need to be, and if you, if you forget what those are, you can look them up in the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Manual, it has that on that page too, or there's always definitions in the back as well. And take some time to work on the goals that you've already submitted, make any, any adjustments to those, both by way of structure, or if there's, you know, if you're thinking through and, and through what, you know, what your population is that you perhaps want to target, or any of those other things. The other thing, I don't want you to really worry too much about that ending point, so that ending percentage, because that's, that's something that's really going to need to be set collaboratively with the superintendent, so that, so that there is an understanding of what is achievable while still requiring that adult behavior change, so that, that's another component that we maybe didn't cover a little bit ago, but we want the goals to challenge the organization and to require change in adult behavior. So, so that, that's what part of that focusing and prioritizing is as well, is that if you're going to have these one-to-five goals, that, that they are going to be stretched enough that the, that they will make a significant move in the needle for, you know, do a significant job of moving the needle for kids, and by that, cause the need for adult behavior change. But again, if you want to leave that as X or Y percent until such time that that number can come up, we really want the target population, the area of, of, you know, whether it be math, reading, what have you, and then the population. So any questions?
Cindy, I wanted to raise one thing, and then I had one question. I think the board, board members and the superintendent and the treasurer know this, and I know you and Ray know this, we just have some people who are in the room with us tonight who haven't been in these sessions before, and we may have folks viewing at home or who view it later. And could you say just a minute about, not long, but just a minute about how the values from the community and the vision from the community are informing what we're writing and also what will happen next, just for anybody who doesn't have as much proximity to this as we do?
Sure, sure. So when we talk about goal setting for the organization, for the district, the board sets, sets goals for the district, they do that. They, and that's the representation of what we call the vision of the community. So the vision being where you want students to go, and, and what you want to be true for students at a, in a future state, as far as what they are able to do and what they know. So right now, what the board has is survey data from when the superintendent search happened, as well as the student performance data that was put up on the screen a little bit ago. And those are the two things, so input from the community and then the actual student performance data, that is what's put together in order to formulate those priorities for the district by setting those SMART goals around what students know and are able to do. The values of the community are set through another policy statement that we call guardrails, and we'll talk more about those later, but those are generally prohibitions on superintendent authorities, so, and grounded in values that the community wants protected. So it means when you're working to accomplish this, superintendent, it's, this is, this is the clear direction to the superintendent, this is where we want you to get, that's the goals, and the guardrails are what you cannot do, what you're not allowed to do as you pursue accomplishment of those, of those goals. Once the board has taken the time through this work session this evening and will work to finish this up next Monday night, then they're going to be going back out to the community with these goals and guardrails to listen, to have dialogue with the community and get, gather more input to, to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made. And then from there, land on a set of goals and guardrails that can be adopted, and those serve as then the, the North Star for the superintendent to plan forward for the district.
Thanks, Cindy.
You're welcome. Okay. So if you all want to go ahead and, and take a little time and perhaps if there's questions among any of you or you need brainstorming partners, feel free to, or need help with any of your revisions, feel free to grab a shoulder partner or check in with Ben or Brandon perhaps, or any, anybody who, who you could brainstorm with if you need.
And then Cindy, could we, could we set an end time? Like, when, when would you like to pull everybody back together?
Yeah, I, is, what's reasonable for the group? Would, can people get this wrapped up in, in 10 or 15 minutes with modifying whatever it is you have already had?
I think yes, is, is, I can't tell if it was, Vice President Jones? So I think that the, the charge is, I think people submitted some goals that even though we went over this content a couple months ago, didn't reflect what they were supposed to reflect. So Cindy's gone back over it again, and I think that the request is to spend 10 to 15 minutes looking at what you drafted and making any changes to make sure that it actually fits the requirements of what the goals need to have and of our own. Yeah, and so I think the question is, can people do that in 10 minutes, or do they need longer than 10?
I need longer than 10 minutes. I've, I've already communicated with them, and I think I just need to go back and almost redo mine. Not, not, I think I hit some of the topic area, the target areas, but for me, I'm not going to be able to think through this in 10 or 15 minutes.
Superintendent?
I wonder if it's beneficial, or if there's any space, you know, for the next seven to 10 minutes or so to talk about it as a group instead of individually, just to see if there, you know, if there are any questions that anyone has, or any feedback might that be?
I think that's certainly one, one suggestion. Is there anybody who would like to have a little bit of time on their own?
I think we should.
Dr. Moffett?
I would really like for us to kind of progress forward. I love the idea of discussing, you know, I'm a discuser, together. I want us to discuss so that we can, I really feel like I kind of want to do it by myself, but I would like for us to be able to, in the best interest of time, work to, work publicly together. So can we just do that?
Well, so I think
Perhaps I should let you know what the prize is in this before we make decisions. Is that all right?
Yeah, that sounds great, go ahead.
So typically, what, what would happen is that everyone would have, would have their in-goals and guardrails, but right now, we're just focused on goals, goals written, they're one to five, that they've prioritized from the data and the community input. Once that's complete, then we would have you pair up and come to consensus between the two of you on four. Then we would have you have the pairs pair up. So then groups of four would then, would then discuss, you know, each, each pair's goals and come to consensus on three goals. Those paper that you have behind you, and then from there, we would have a full group discussion around what, you know, and around what's up on the paper, see where there's, if there's any consensus points, and then discuss, discuss the remaining as far as whether, whether or not those that there aren't consensus on should be kept or modified or what have you. But with that landing on a draft set of three to five through that process, so that would be, that would be the, so there would be a group, full group component, it's just stepping it, stepping into it through that, that process of pairing and then grouping.
Thank you, Cindy. Ms. Bolden?
Yeah. I think it'd be great for us to review our individual goals, and we haven't discussed the guardrails yet, and see if we could correct them and improve them. I have an interest in knowing what all seven board members have to say. That's the way we do business. If we're pairing off or two, three, and then coming up with, I mean, I just think that could help us, and maybe that's not the right process, but that way, we're, we're all seeing what everybody has written, and I'll tell you, from the seven, and times three, or times four, or times five, then we, I think you can get four or five goals if we see everyone's work. I mean, I don't, I think that's better than the fragmenting, or much as I have two very knowledgeable people on either side that will help me, I'd rather see all seven. I really would.
Thanks, Ms. Bolden. I wonder if Mr. Craig, and then I have a thought too.
I was just going to share maybe an option here in doing this, and I know Cindy, you, you and I and Ben and Carolyn have been working towards putting this together for us to be able to do with everyone's schedules, it was very difficult. And so maybe in the best use of this time would be, we take about 15 to 20 minutes to really, everyone self-reflect, do their own. I'm certainly willing to go around and help anyone who might have questions in their individual space, but then what we can do is just do the out-loud part of it amongst the bigger group to identify those maybe one to five areas of commonalities, or one to six areas of commonalities, and then break up into two groups from that point to, to have the larger discussion as to putting those onto paper. Because I do think, you know, this is an interest of people's concerns, and, and to a certain extent, some folks may have very similar goals, and if we're really talking about getting us, if we all have three of the same goals, and then we're really talking about just the measurable amounts in that, that may be something that's easier to digest and get through and move past for the sake of this group.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I think that certainly seems reasonable to me. I think what I was going to ask is, part of the reason we wanted to contract with some experts is so they could advise us on how we can get better. And so I was curious if Ray or Cindy have, have whatever recommendation you have for how we make some progress on this tonight? I think we would, I'm speaking for myself, I'd love to learn from what you all have to suggest.
So I, I, that is, that is a process that, that we have used that has been successful, but I am willing, definitely willing to, I think Brandon's suggestion is reasonable as well. I do think if folks can take some time on their own, as he mentioned, to, to get, to do whatever reflection and revision on what they already have in the next, you know, 15, 20 minutes, and then start that discussion to see what commonality there is, then that, we can definitely give that a try. Ray, do you have any, anything to add? Or any?
I don't know. I would share the same. I think that the observation, having looked at what was submitted, the observation is several are similar in nature, not identical, but similar in nature. If you clarify kind of where, where you were headed, what you were looking for in the next 15 to 20 minutes, I think you can start a broader conversation, but I would, reflecting on those who want more time, I would say, leave a little room for those to come back and say, I've reflected on this a little more, here's what I would tweak based on our conversation and, and kind of where we landed on today.
Thank you very much, Ray and Cindy. So I think the proposal on the table, which I, which I'd like for us to start soon, barring some other objections from a significant number, was, can we do 15, just to try to keep us moving along for some other, other parts of our evening? But we give people 15 minutes, and this would be time to look back on their individual drafts based on the review from Ray and from Cindy, make any changes that they would like to make, and then we'll follow the suggestion of Member Craig and Member Bolden, which is to have that discussion as a larger group. And I think we are in the timeline that I had sent out earlier, we do have some time for this this evening, but I would also like to keep it moving forward. Any concerns with that process? I see some head nods. Ms. Bolden?
Just to, just to put it together, based upon what Member Craig said, to, I mean, I can do 15 minutes and work on these goals, but I liked the idea that areas of commonality, topics, rather than us comparing the, how we've written particular things, it'd be interesting to see if there's areas of common targets or common focus, like, okay, did everybody say something about attendance? Did somebody say something about disproportionality of discipline? That way, rather than necessarily wordsmithing and fixing these, we might be able to conclude tonight something where we at least have a list. You know, I like that folk, I like that areas of commonality topically.
Yeah, I think that sounds fine. Any objections from Cindy or from Ray?
And then I just want to clarify.
Dr. Moffett?
These are just ours, we're still going to take these out to the community. So we could come up, we could find commonalities amongst seven of us, but if the community says, hey, discipline is not really our issue, as an example, but we want to talk about something else, then
That's right.
it really doesn't, that doesn't really matter. So I, I like the areas of commonality, but this is really just what we're thinking, that's not what the community is, is saying is important.
I think, we'll go to Ms. Bolden in a second. I think to Dr. Moffett's point, I think that is true, and anything anybody is suggesting should be informed by the stakeholder engagement that happened with the search. That hit almost 4,000 people. Every school, community, over 100 zip codes was about 50/50 split, people of color, white respondents, so it's not, it's not perfect, but it's also the most extensive community engagement I've seen since being a board member. So the, the thought is, if you're going to suggest an area for commonality, like Member Bolden said, it should be both because there's something in the data makes it feel important for kids, and the community said something in our last significant stakeholder engagement that leads us to have a good hypothesis at least, that this is something that's really important. Okay, so we'll, we'll come back then in 15 minutes. 15 minutes is 7:10 Eastern, and when we, when we come back, people will share what they have to share with the group. Cindy, ready?
Yeah, and the one thing I want everyone to make sure is that their goals should be about what students know and are able to do. So I've heard various comments about, for example, disproportionality in discipline. Is that about what students know and are able to do, or is that about what adults in the system are doing? Anybody?
I would say, Cindy, it's, it's not necessarily, sorry, Brandon, did you, Mr. Craig, did you want to go? It may necessarily be a student outcome, but just for, for, I happen to feel that some of those things are very important, and there might be lots of room in guardrails to have some, some of those same values.
Absolutely.
Even if a student outcome goal around discipline disparities, there absolutely could be a guardrail about it.
That's right, that's right. So that's, that's what I want, that's what I'm thinking as you're reflecting. So that's what I want, that's what I'm thinking as you're reflecting with this information, is setting aside some of the goals you might have written around what are really not about what students know and are able to do, and leave that for later when we're doing guardrail work, and come back to this conversation with goals around student outcomes.
Vice President Jones, did you have a question?
I'm just trying to clarify. When you say, let's work on this for 15 minutes, are you talking, are you speaking, talking about us sort of doing our own individual cleanup or revision for 15 minutes, which means we break from the agenda to do that? Or are you talking about discussing as a full board the areas of commonality?
It's not a break from the agenda. We're still within the same governance coaching item. And so I think what it would be, no, people would have some time on their own. The meeting would continue. There won't be sidebar conversations with a majority of board members. It would just be some time to do any thinking you need to do.
Well, so if that's the case, then I am not in favor of taking time for each of us 15 minutes to work on our own individual thing when we have a public out here sitting, waiting on their meeting. And we might say, I might suggest, I'm not opposed to doing the process, but maybe we push that to the end of the meeting and do the business meeting first. I'm having a struggle with taking 15 minutes of personal quiet time, and nothing's going on as far as the meeting is concerned.
So there may be a difference of opinion on this. I think that this is in line with the intention for how we're going to spend between 6:00 and 8:30 on this part, but I'm only one person.
Yeah.
And if a majority of board members would like to do it differently, we will do it differently.
Maybe I just didn't quite understand when we were planning this, that this is what that meant, that we were going to take that kind of time from the meeting. I understood it globally, but I didn't understand the part about 15 minutes to take personal time to do it. That's my struggle.
Do you just need a motion? I just think we should do whatever
Dr. Moffett, go ahead.
we need to do to conclude so that the public can leave, and then we can continue this. But I'm happy to make a motion or whatever to formalize it.
So I think the motion would be to follow the recommendation of what the coaches have shared, and that we take 15 minutes, give people time to do that, come back together and have the kind of conversation that Mr. Craig and Ms. Bolden were suggesting. And if that's not the will of the board, we won't do it. But is there somebody who'd be willing to motion that that's the way we should proceed? Mr. Craig?
Can I just say something here real quick? And I think this is the only thing I will think it might be a good use of our time to do, is that I think if we're committing ourselves to having this discussion and fully having this discussion and not wasting each other's time in this discussion, then I have no problem with us doing the board's regular work, coming back to this discussion, and moving on. What I don't want is for us to be sitting here next week, still talking about trying to get to this discussion, because the reality is, and unfortunately, this is part of the truth of it, is that the guidelines that were given out for the goals and guardrails, that the conversation was asked for us to put these together, that we were all tasked with doing this, it's been on the agenda as a part of our discussion. So again, I'm not opposed to us moving the other board stuff out so that the folks who are here and the folks who are at home watching for specific things don't have to stick around. Not opposed to that at all. But that also means that we individually have to commit ourselves to having this discussion in an efficient manner, and not how we have typically had our discussions on the board. Because that's part of why we set this timeframe, is that we wouldn't be sitting here at 11:00 still trying to have these discussions, which is how we typically operate it. So I, again, am okay with moving that stuff, and having the motion be that we continue the other parts of the meeting to get that out of the way. But I want that to be something we all commit to saying, we are going to do this conversation in an efficient manner and be ready to be done at a specific time.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I also, I'm going to go to Vice President Jones in just a second, but we did set this plan up in advance, and we only have our coaches until 8:30. And so they've cleared the time we asked them to clear. And then I did say Vice President Jones, but then I'll go to Mr. Maraski, and then we're going to get a motion, and we're going to move on.
Well, I think, and I don't want to belabor this. I'll do whatever the board wants to do. But I think I should make it known for myself personally, they communicated with me about some of the, some ideas and suggestions for me to process for my own work. And 15 minutes is not enough time for me to really contribute to the whole if I can't think through how I want it. Now, I'm prepared to stay, and I understand that we agree that what their time is. And if that's what we agree to, then I'll just do what I can. But I don't feel like I can give 100% in 15 minutes of gap time. And I would be concerned that I would not be in doing justice through the process if I can't do that. But I'll do whatever the board wants to do.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Mr. Maraski?
Thank you, President Lindy. Real quick, I've been listening to this, I've changed my mind like six times. This conversation is evidence in a lot of ways of why we need to have this training, and I'm pretty frustrated. And part of the reason is because, I know at least me, Cindy sent me feedback on my goals three days ago so that I could be prepared for tonight. And I'm not trying to, but I'm just saying, I have extraordinarily busy. This was not a good weekend for me to do this stuff. My point is, we do keep pushing it back. We can be done at 8:00. We can go look at our things. All they're asking is to look at our three goals and write them with, by this date, this date, this percentage. That's not, unless you don't have your goals. If you don't have your goals, then you probably, we need more than 15 minutes. We all should have our goddamn goals. So let's just do it and pull off the Band-Aid and be done with it.
Thanks, Mr. Maraski. Dr. Moffett?
I just wanted to clarify. I'm not saying don't do it. What I'm saying is, we've got people sitting here waiting, and I think it's rude for us to take 15 minutes of reflection time, and we already have that. We could just go on ahead and do it. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying, let's finish the business of the meeting first so that people can leave, and then we do it. That's all I was saying. So I just wanted to clarify that I just think, I've even got people texting, like, why are we waiting? Let's finish the meeting and then do our stuff today. Let's get it done today. I'm not saying don't. But let's go.
So I think we have, we're going to make a motion, if someone would like to make a motion, to spend 15 minutes to give people a chance to make any, and I want to acknowledge, it won't be a perfect amount of time to make everything perfect, but to do a little bit of good work in the time that we have, along the timeline that we committed to before. We'll finish this conversation with the facilitation of the coaches. And wherever we are, no later than 8:30, which was the timeline communicated, we're going to go back to our regular business as planned and finish, I hope, by 9:30. Basically, to do the best we can in line with the plan that we had. If that does not pass, I'm very happy to move in a different direction. But is there somebody who would make a motion to that effect?
That we continue?
Yes.
I move that we continue with the aforementioned and pre-planned and publicly noticed plan to do this work until at least 8:30 or before, and then move on with the rest of the agenda.
Thanks, Mr. Maraski. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I think we've had our discussion. I think we should probably do a roll call vote on this one. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Bolden?
Hi.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Dr. Moffett?
No.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, so at 7:05, we will reconvene at 7:20. The meeting will stay on. There's not an end. There's no sidebar conversations for board members. We're just giving people a little bit of time to implement the feedback that the council shared, and we'll pick back up right no later than 7:20. Thank you.
In the interest of particularly Madam Vice Chair, Board Member Jones, your concerns. The process that we'll go through now is having you share your goals. We'll have you share one goal and share them one at a time. And one of the things that I'll ask you to do is I'll ask you if you have a similar goal, to please share that goal at the time that your fellow board members share their goal. And we'll make note of the consistency. So in other words, we'll go across the board, have you share one goal, one and only one, and then ask others if they have something similar to share. And to make sure that we address the concerns of giving you some time to reflect on the goals that you've written, these won't be the end. So the goals that you lay out today will give you a broad framework for where you want to set your goals. We'll work this week on revising the wording of those goals. And Madam Vice Chair, we will spend the beginning of next week's conversation, when we start next week on the 19th, we will go back to and return to the goals just in case there's anything that's missed, there's anything that we'd like to add to the table for consideration, any revisions, any goals that weren't discussed tonight, we'll make sure we reflect on those next week so that we have full discussion around the goals before moving into the guardrails. So hopefully this process will address that. So given that, I just want to go one board member at a time. And Chairman Lindy, we can decide kind of how, what order you want to proceed. But we'll ask you to just share one and only one of your goals. And then if we'll note those, and then if a colleague has a similar goal, please share it at the same time, and then we'll move to the next individual after we've had a conversation about the first goal that was shared. Does that make sense to everyone? Does that work for you as a process?
Great, thank you, Ray.
All right, so whomever would like to begin, we can begin with whoever would like to share the first goal.
Mrs. Weinberg, start us off.
I will share my first goal. I have that students in grades K through six will meet the reading proficiency standards from the designated state test and will increase from 50% to 75% from the school year of 2022 to 2023 throughout the next three years will be used as progress points as well.
And so I've got the reading proficiency standards in grades, I've missed the grade levels.
Three through six.
And your microphone is breaking up, three through six?
Kindergarten through six.
Kindergarten through six, thank you. That's what I was missing, it broke up each time. Cindy, any questions, any comments about that goal? So we've actually got one goal, but it's addressing six, seven grade levels.
Yes. Superintendent Wright has a question.
I have a question, and this came up in a part of our discussion. So earlier when we discussed, there are three different types of goals that we're looking at, proficiency rates, growth goals, and closing or reducing gaps. So I thought earlier we talked about the assessments that we would use would be like the approved state assessments, but if not, would this be the space that we talk about using a different type of assessment instead of a state assessment? So for example, for K two, we don't necessarily, we have an assessment, but it's not a state assessment that's done with it, it's an individual, it's a couple of options for individuals. So we have to report that information, but there is not a one test that then gives that information that comes from the state.
Good question.
So does it matter, is it up to us where we say this is the rate, this is what we want to do that self-reported, or would we then look at a modification possibly of the goal to say, to go back to the measure that we said we would use?
I think it's up to you to make that determination. Obviously, in those grades where you don't have a state test, you'll have to make adjustments to the goals. In addition to that, at any grade level, you're not going to be able to have the same proficiency level as, for example, third grade won't necessarily have the same proficiency changes necessarily as other grade levels. So sometimes that will vary as well. The other thing I want to make sure we clarify is that, again, if you're talking, say grades K through, you're talking about multiple goals. So you as a board will have to decide, is that what we want overall? Or do we want to focus on what specific goal that's going to move the needle for all students? So just FYI, that's understanding what we mean by setting goals, that's multiple goals with different assessments involved. Cindy, did you have anything you want to share to that before we move?
No, nothing to share, I think you covered it all.
My next question, did anyone have a similar goal? This was K to six reading, and we've got, I see multiple hands going up. So if you had something similar, do you want to share what you had that was similar?
Yeah, I'll go. Mine was specific to third grade, since it's kind of a litmus test for a lot of other factors and dominos that have to fall for success. So the percentage of third graders who will read on grade level will increase from 44.7% 2022 to 90% by 2027 as per the third grade reading exam.
And so your focus is third grade, not K through six, the only difference? And again, presuming you're talking about proficiency, when you say on grade level, I'm presuming you mean proficient?
Yes.
Okay. Which would make it the same as the original. I believe I saw several hands, so we'll just go down the row. You had something similar, someone else had something similar?
Yeah, so I had the same general theme of measuring the increase of students who demonstrate English language arts proficiency increasing from 44.7, or third grade English language arts proficiency from increasing as measured in 2021, 2022 school year to greater than, I didn't go as high as Mike, I went to 65%, Mike's more ambitious than I am, I guess, by the, as measured, as would be measured in the 2026, 2027 school year. By the, yes, C test.
So 2026, 2027 school year, the only difference between the original recommendation and yours is you set a five-year goal rather than a three-year goal, correct? Well, and the K to six piece, but you're looking again focused at third grade and a five-year goal.
Yes, and actually, Mike and I have slightly different numbers, but otherwise, yes, as far as where they would get to.
Yeah, I think Cindy shared earlier, don't worry about the numbers. The target can call with the superintendent about what's achievable, what's a reach goal, so we'll kind of balance those two. Did anyone else have a similar goal? So we've got right now two, go ahead.
Mine was very similar, it said third grade math scores on the OST, sorry, third grade reading scores on the OST will improve from 44.7% in the spring of '22 to 66.4% in the spring of '26. I don't want that to sound like a out-of-left-field number, the idea was get back to where we were before the pandemic, is where I pulled that number from. But I hear your point that we don't need to worry about the specific target for the purpose of tonight. It's a three-year goal, so by '26.
So '26 will be four-year goal?
I was thinking that we would have the, she would have the '23, '24 school year, the '24, '25 school year, and the '25, '26 school year to execute based on a budget that was informed by these goals. So I was thinking it may be four or five years from now, but it would be a three-year runway she would have to work with.
That makes sense, very helpful, helpful clarification, so got it, perfect. Any others have a similar goal? So that's three for third grade, but it all builds on the K to six, which was the original goal, yes?
Little bit of an expanded population, the same goal, increased reading and math proficiency among all third through eighth graders from, and I just inserted my numbers, 44 points similar as Mike, 44.7% to 90% by 2000, by year 2025, 2026.
So same year, just expanded from all three through eight, and you, to math and reading?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You include math and reading, not just literacy, not just a literacy goal, but math and reading?
Yes, and reading, correct.
And again, noting that those are multiple goals, multiple grade levels. Anyone else have a similar?
I think there's a question from the superintendent, Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I do a goal as well, or I don't, I don't think, I know I had to submit goals, but I don't do them as a part of this conversation, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, if you have no similar goal, have you mentioned it, have you mentioned it, anyone have a similar goal?
So I have a similar goal. I said the percentage of students at the lowest performing schools who meet the state standard will increase from X to Y by academic year 2025, 2026, but I didn't put the numbers in there yet.
That's okay.
But I talked about the percentage at the lowest performing schools.
Okay, so the percentage of the lowest performing schools by 2026?
Yes, I said, well, it will, I said the percentage of students at the lowest performing schools who meet the state standard will increase from X to Y by academic year 2025, 2026.
And I'm assuming by state standard, you mean proficiency?
Yes.
Okay. Is that just reading?
Um, well, I just, I didn't, I didn't specify which one, I was just kind of leaving that a little general. That's why when you asked for what's a similar one, mine wasn't specific for math or reading, but it was just like the state, whatever their state standards are, they increase.
Okay, not a problem at all. So that's perfect, so we've got essentially one, A six reading, three, as I count, third grade reading, two, really, two third grade reading specifically, three through eight, and then the lowest performing schools. Two through eight is both math and reading, and then a lowest performing schools presumably both math and reading. Second goal, what is, and so we'll move on to the next school board member that wants to share, what is your next goal that was unrelated to the first goal that you shared? So what was, what was the next goal that you had, anyone can feel free to share, that's unrelated to the first one we just discussed?
I'll go first. I have graduation rate for cohort 2022, 2023 will increase by 10% within one year.
Okay, 10, within one year, meaning this year is a big, next year is a big?
Yes. Base, base trend, right, one year.
So from 2022 to 2023?
Yes.
Okay, did anyone have something similar to an improvement in the graduation rate? Anyone have a similar goal?
I did.
Graduation rate, yes, go ahead, what was yours?
So for mine, I had graduation rates and college career readiness for high school students will increase from 78 to 98% using a three-year point of progress.
And so you have graduation rate and college and career readiness? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that's one for graduation rates, so again, you've got multiple goals, and if I'm not mistaken, the Ohio Department of Education has separately on the Ohio Report Card, graduation rates, college and career readiness, well, actually, college readiness and career readiness are all separate factors on the Ohio Department of Education. on the uh Ohio Department of Education um report card. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, uh, uh, it's, you know, as we begin, we're beginning the process. So don't, I want you to continue to share, just as you're sharing, I think it's perfect, we'll ask for other examples. But just keep in mind that on that report card, graduation rate, college readiness, career readiness, all have multiple factors. So as you select goals and you begin to think about goals, as you begin to refine your cover segments, um, you think really critically about whether it's an overarching goal that encompasses everything or whether it's specific elements of those goals, there should be particular targets for uh the students in your district. So just laying that out there is as food for thought. So that's two, uh, something is clearly graduation rate. Did anyone have uh something else related to graduation rate?
Mine, mine isn't, Ray, mine isn't really graduation rate, but it's, it speaks to the college career plus and, and uh, uh, career participation. By school year twenty four, twenty five, the rate of participation and completion by CPS minority females in college credit plus will be at the state average for statewide minority female students and fifteen percent higher than the state average among minority females for career path participation and completion.
Okay, so higher than state average. Um, and by higher than state average, you mean higher than state average for all students? Or higher than state average for their individual student group?
For similar students, minority female.
Got it, for similar students. Okay, uh, and so that really goes with the college and career, uh, really goes with um, uh, career readiness.
Yes.
Others, are there others that are similar? Yes, sir.
Uh, I focused around uh reducing the graduation gap among Hispanic and uh black, non Hispanic students. For my original goal, and so uh over a uh, I mean, a period of time, so I changed a little bit around both of my goals there around the numbers. Um, but it, but it's still really focusing around the black and uh Hispanic students who had the lowest graduation rates in comparative to the white and Asian students and other minorities.
So when you say reducing the graduation gap, you originally said between Hispanic and black, non Hispanic. It sounds like you're comparing to the district overall or to white students.
The, I was, I said, the reducing the graduation gap for both black and his, black, non Hispanic and Hispanic students in comparison to the overall for the districts and the other.
Perfect. Okay, so you've got, so you didn't graduation, but yours is a graduation gap for specific student groups who are alone in their peers. Any others have something similar to graduation? Or college and career readiness, since we're, we're taking them all out of lump sum? Any others?
I had one, but it's kind of embarrassing compared to my colleagues. I like theirs better, so I rescind it. Pretty generic.
An important part of the process, as you hear others, you say, wait a minute, that one is good. I like that one, so I'll jump on.
I'm gonna fold mine to theirs.
All right, uh, any others? If there are no others, then we will quickly go to um the third highest um goal that you have established. So um, next, uh, any, anyone can share, uh, but share a third goal that is unique from the first two, so not related uh to either the first two.
Um, I'm, this is uh my number one, and I'm probably wrong. Uh, in order to increase academic growth, the chronic absenteeism rate will decline to twenty two percent in school year twenty four, twenty five, or within five percent of the state average.
All right, so chronic absenteeism rate, so a question for you on that one. Is that chronic absenteeism rate something that a, that students uh know are able to do?
Like, able to attend school.
Is that what they are, that they know, or is that something they're able? You can say able to attend school. Uh, would it be better as a, as a guardrail that you work toward or as a goal?
Nope. I've got too many guardrails now.
I didn't hear you. Say it again, I didn't hear what you said.
She, she said she has too many guardrails already, Ray.
We'll leave it, we'll leave it as a goal for you then. Uh, did anyone else, did, did everyone else have some, go ahead, Cindy.
Oh, no, I was turning, I was turning it off. I'm, I'm not doing Darth Vader impressions anymore for the night. I'm out.
So uh, understandably, um, that you've got too many, too many guardrails, so you put as a goal. Uh, but we'll consider it as, and let your colleagues consider it as well uh as a goal as we move forward through the process. Uh, but just keep in mind that um if it's important, um, and you, you value it, uh, make sure that you're thinking about, is this something that, that students are able to show that they can do? So um, anyone else have something similar to chronic absenteeism rate? Anyone have a similar goal around chronic absenteeism?
I did, but I was, this is Kareem, but I wasn't going to say it because I was told that that was a guardrail. But I did think in my own minds, I just said the percentage of chronic absenteeism will be reduced by thirty percent the academic year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. But because I think students can make a choice to come, or you know, I was thinking that there, I, I, I was thinking that that was something that they could possibly control. So that's why I thought that, but I'm with you. We're never both. We're rebels together.
I, yeah, I also had it, uh, but I focused it around uh decreasing the chronic absenteeism among racial and ethnic minority high school students. Really focused on a generation of students who might actually be controlling a little bit more of their uh to and from school.
So what was the grade band, grade bands you focused on?
Good try.
Uh, high school students.
Okay, so just high school in general, so grades nine through twelve?
Yeah, uh, racial and ethnic minority high school students is the specific group. But I'm with it, because again, their numbers.
And Cindy, I'm not sure if it's just me, did they freeze?
Absenteeism, there we go.
Okay, now you're, you're back. We, we lost you for a moment. I'm not sure Cindy, did you hear me, but we, we lost you for a moment.
I did as well.
So, so I have a question, is it not a goal because of the topic, chronic absenteeism? Is, is it because student, can, can you explain why the absenteeism wouldn't be a goal? It would be a guardrail?
Absolutely, uh, I'd be happy to. So um, and even, even guardrails, I, you know, we have a conversation about. But when you said, and I'll use your example, well, even though one goal was to focus around high school students, uh, really the example of absenteeism among elementary school students, for example. When you talk about adults and you talk about the things that adults influence versus the things that um, that students demonstrate that they're able to do. We distinguish between anything that is adult-driven uh or adult outcome-driven and anything that is a student outcome. When you talk about attendance, things of that nature, what you're really talking about is adults, and I'll give you other examples. Adults, um, you know, for example, uh, adults with attendance, um, and particularly at the elementary level. We have had to do things such as robocalls to, to parents to remind them about the importance of attendance, things like that. So there's lots of examples, but those robocalls aren't actually interventions for kids. Those robocalls are actually interventions for their parents to encourage their parents to encourage them to come to school. So again, what you're talking about is the adult-to-adult relationships, but not just any things that a child is able to demonstrate, here's what I know, what I know how to do, or here's what I'm able to do. Does that help? Does that make sense?
It does, but when he made his about high schoolers, that ma, that makes it a little different, right? Because high schoolers could in essence get themselves to school? Is that right? Not, not one.
I think it could be considered, um, however, just remembering that you have three to five, and these will be the priorities of the, of the school district. Um, and then also you want to think about um what's in the control of the superintendent to some degree as well. But it, for high school level, it, it could be, it's more um
More feasible.
It would be more feasible for them than a, yeah, it's in the lower grade levels where they depend on, on an adult to get them there.
Does that, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Did anyone else have one on absenteeism? But that's three, that's three board members that have shared something related to absenteeism. Okay, uh, next board member, the next goal that you had. Go ahead, Chairman Lynn.
Uh, thanks, Ray. I had um algebra one scores on the end of course test will improve from twenty seven point one percent in spring of twenty two to fifty one point six percent by spring of twenty six. It's the same source of the numbers. It was trying to get back to where we were before the, before the pandemic uh with a, with a three-year runway, but I'm focusing on algebra one.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so we had earlier um a goal around math for a third through eighth graders um collectively. And we had another on lowest performing schools for both reading and math. Uh, did anyone have anything else? So this is another math goal, but it's specific to algebra. Did anyone have a similar goal? Uh, we'll start by keeping it specific to algebra, but then we'll broaden to another math goal, just in case there's another one uh out there. Uh, yes, I think I see one hand in the air. Yes, but just so you know, I apologize, you may have to go ahead and speak up. But you're really, really small on the calendar, on the screen, because they've zoomed out to capture you all, so.
I also had uh increasing uh the percentage of uh students who demonstrated proficiency in algebra one. Uh, from the, I think it's twenty seven point one percent up to, I put it at greater than forty two percent, giving it three-year window, um and it's as measured by the end of course exams.
Okay, so that's two around algebra one, with uh, and that's for all, for both of those is for all students, correct?
For all students who would be at the algebra one level. So I think it's administered eighth and ninth grade, ninth grade. And so um, it would be the folks who are taking it at that ninth grade level would demonstrate proficiency. An increase in the proficiency, at least for mine it was.
So just ninth grade level?
Testers, whoever tests.
It's this.
Ninth grade test takers.
Yeah, well, it's the algebra one test takers would be at the ninth grade level or eighth grade level.
So primarily, our, our ninth grade, our, primarily ninth grade students are in algebra one, but this is, this is correlated to the algebra one EOC. So we may have eighth graders that take algebra one as well. So I think that the reference was just for algebra one students, not just a grade level.
And that's what I wanted to clarify. It's all algebra one students, not just um a specific grade level. So that, that was all I wanted to clarify. I was hearing two different things, uh, all, and I also heard ninth grade test takers. So I wanted to make sure we clarified. So perfect. Uh, any, any others have something similar to algebra? Algebra one. Okay, next top. Next top goal.
Ray, I might have missed a, a couple of references to achievement gaps. Can I say my one about achievement gap now?
Go ahead.
Okay, good. Um, let's see. Using the state proficiency tests, the current racial achievement gap within third and sixth grade cohorts will be eliminated for those same students by school year twenty five, twenty six.
Uh, completely eliminated?
Repeat. Yes, absolutely. Go for it, Superintendent.
And we, we'll discuss the A to B as part of the next step in the process, but uh, but that's helpful. So um, I think we did have lowest performing schools earlier. Uh, so we had the proficiency rates for lowest performing schools. This one is somewhat comparable, but its focus is racial achievement gaps um as opposed to lowest performing schools, correct?
Right, the, and the, the reason for that, and I know that's as a retired teacher, not as a board member, I understand the the difficulty of attainment, but that would mean that by, you know, by that school year, we will have put our sixth graders and our ninth graders in much better positions for the future uh than they are now. And I think those are such critical years.
Okay, uh, any others have something similar to uh racial achievement gaps? And we've already got two um in lowest performing schools. Anyone have something similar?
So I don't have something similar, but I wanted to add to the math goal. Can I go ahead and add that now, or do you want me to wait?
You can absolutely add that now.
Okay, so I had for my last goal, um CPS students in grades two through ninth are prepared with math fundamentals in order to excel in the required state mandated math test or district testing by increasing proficiency from thirty percent to eighty percent in a three-year timeframe.
Okay, um, let me ask you this question, just to clarify. Are you, are you presuming that the two through nine scores will be aggregated? So there's one, two through nine score?
No, I think the scores will have to definitely be different.
Okay, so you're really talking about multiple grade level, multiple goals across multiple grade levels, okay?
Yes.
Uh, and going back to the racial achievement gaps, just to be clear, was that racial achievement gaps for reading and math? Or racial achievement gaps for just math?
It's just for math, because I had given one already for reading.
No, 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 I'm going back to the previous, uh, the previous goal.
I, I currently, I currently have it for both.
For both, okay.
And math.
All right, um, anyone else have a high-level goal?
Go ahead.
Ray, I'll, I'll share. Um, one thing I missed earlier, I apologize for. I also had one on third grade math. So I think there were, there was one that spanned several early grades for math, so you can throw me in with that camp. Um, the only other one I had was um that uh ELA two scores on the EOC will improve from uh forty five point nine percent in spring twenty two to fifty two percent in by spring twenty six. People will see a pattern, it's the same three-year runway to get back to where we were before the pandemic. Um, and the, the reason I chose algebra one and ELA two is because of the impact those two have on graduation rates. They seem like good things for us to focus on. Thank you.
Okay, and the ELA two is in ninth grade or tenth grade?
I think it's, it's tenth grade, isn't it? Tenth grade.
That's what I thought. Uh, any others? So any others care to share a high-level goal? Any others? All right, so we are at five minutes until the hour. Uh, so a couple of things that we'll do, um, we'll open up the floor for, for discussion uh with you and your peers. But I want to recap and let you know that by and large, um, obviously, everyone said uh, reading goals and, and or math goals, mostly and math goals. They vary. Some are specific to grade levels, some are specific to lowest performing schools, some are specific to um, uh, race, uh, so racial achievement gaps. Um, others are specific to, again, high school, so looking at algebra one, algebra two. Now, I want to remind you, if, what we're trying to boil down now is um, we're trying to boil down to three to five goals that the superintendent can focus on for the next three to five years. So keep in mind, if we ask the superintendent to improve math achievement in grades K through ten, if we include, let's say, K through nine, if we include. in grades K through ten, if we include, let's say K through nine, if we include Algebra One in mathematics, uh, where does the superintendent have to, if that's one goal to improve student outcomes in grades K through nine in mathematics, where does the student superintendent have to invest resources? Any takers?
Well, I guess using the example you just gave with K through nine, that the idea would be that the superintendent would be expected to invest in all levels of math between K and, between kindergarten and ninth grade, which realistically um may be hard to focus any one grade level if we're asking to do it for all nine or all ten grade levels, I guess, in, in theory.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, and I'm just following what uh member Craig said. So that means various or different curriculums, perhaps, different resources, staffing resources, that, that kind of thing. That's what I'm thinking about with personnel, yeah, personnel kinds of things.
Personnel, things that, so if that's, if that is the goal, if that's one goal is to imple, increase math achievement across K through nine, then there's a second goal to increase literacy or E L A achievement in grades K through nine. Now, what happens to my resources? Um, two goals in, but what happens to my resource?
They all get loaded into those specific grades, not district-wide.
Okay, so a couple of things to point out um as we go through the process, and this is one of the reasons why we say um three to five real goals, because what we're going to push you to do as a board is we're going to push you to say, what are the critical levers? What are the critical points in the system? And it doesn't mean that the superintendent all used third grade as an example, just because several of you use third grade um as a goal, third grade literacy as a goal. If third grade literacy is your goal, even third grade literacy is a goal for a specific student group, what has to happen over the next five years in order for the superintendent to hit that third grade literacy goal? If that's the goal, just third grade, what has to happen in order to hit that? Can I start it just and only invest in third grade?
No.
No, so my plan, so the superintendent's planning process then does actually encompass and can potentially encompass pre-K, a pre-K investment, a kindergarten investment, like here's how I'm going to hit that third grade goal. But you don't have to set a goal at every grade level to hit that third grade goal. The second thing that I'll point out as part of what we will, we will do throughout this process. So one of the things that we talked about is, we talked about your, the board setting the primary goals. But what also happens as a part of the process is that the superintendent will set what? What did we talk about when we met? The superintendent will set what?
Interim goals.
Interim goals. The superintendent will set interim goals. And so quite often, those interim goals will allow you to know on an annual basis, here's how we know we're going to hit that, that primary goal that you have established three or four or five years down the road. And so those, I'm sorry, my hand is covering the camera. I talk with my hand, so I see it's covering the camera. Uh, but essentially, just so you'll know how the process plays out, as you narrow your goals and narrow the focus, what you're saying is, we want you to focus on hitting this target. But the superintendent recognizes, I've got to do other things. I've got to make other investments along the way to make sure that I hit that target that the, that the board has established. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
All right, does that help? And just in terms of understanding the process? Uh, so now, uh, and I'll bring Cindy back into the process as well, but now we'll start to have a conversation. Um, and feel free to share your thoughts based on, so we talked about your hearing, uh, your peers. Uh, and so we're at eight o'clock now. You've heard your peers, you've heard the goals that have been laid out uh by your peers. Um, where everyone is going, what are your thoughts around what you've heard? Uh, what are your thoughts around uh any changes or thoughts around where you think uh district priorities should begin to lie?
Uh, I, I feel I take away the same sort of initial thought I had the first time we met on that, that Saturday. Does that, I think we're largely all more aligned than, than not uh regarding these goals, um, which I think highlights, you know, when it seems like we're not aligned, how much of that non-alignment is actually fluff and not related to the real work? Because when we talk about the real work, we're aligned, and when we're not talking about the real work, we tend to not be aligned, like the twenty-five minutes it took to have a fifteen-minute exercise.
So I, and I, I agree. I think by and large, you're aligned. Uh, by and large, you, you've got the same general ideas. Reading achievement, math achievement, graduation rates, uh, college and career readiness. Uh, and I know everyone wants to throw in absenteeism, uh, so I'll throw that in, but uh generally, you, you are aligned. Typically, I'll let you know how this process typically works. Typically, again, as Cindy laid out early on, we would take this time and have you pair up um to talk about in pairs what you heard and what you thought about. Uh, then go from the pairs to four, and then go from the four to the whole group. Because what that tends to do is begin to get you more aligned in terms of, do we want to focus on um racial equity? Do we want to focus on um Algebra One in high school? Do we want to focus on math at third grade or math at sixth grade uh or other, other targets? Uh, so typically, that's what we would have you to, have you do is pair up, have you discuss it as pairs, narrow it down even further, discuss it as four, narrow it down even further, and then come together as a broader group. Uh, but others care to comment on what you've heard or what you've seen?
Oh, Ray, I'll share a couple reflections. Um, one is um for, for my part, uh, I had some things in the guardrails section on racial equity in particular, and also on uh readiness for post-graduation. So, and I, I share that not because they have to be there, but just because those feel really important to me, and I like the goals that my colleagues suggested. Um, and so long as, as a commitment to closing racial achievement gaps and a commitment to preparing kids for life after graduation is somewhere in there, uh, I'm very supportive of it. And I think that, that's a, just speaks to my position more broadly is, is there are so many important things for us to do. Um, what really matters, and I'm speaking just for myself, is that we, we pick some places to prioritize and we go after them together. Um, I'm, I'm more committed to that than what the specific choice points are. And I'd say that for almost anything that people suggested this evening, um, i- if that's where a majority of board members in our administration are, uh, I would be very excited to support that.
Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else?
Ray, if you don't mind, I think I would like to um have everyone hear what Superintendent Wright's goals were and where they, where they fit in, because this is um largely a collaborative process with the superintendent and, and so uh on this goal-setting piece, so if you don't mind sharing, I think, I think it would be nice for everyone to hear where yours, where yours landed.
Okay, thank you. So um, I didn't expect for you to do that after Ray told me that I didn't get to share, so.
I, I just overrode Ray, so there you go.
So my, my goals were primarily around um assessment data, as I shared earlier. Um, and I guess I would like to say out loud um that I do have graduation rate on my list. While it's not necessarily one that relates to a student outcome as we think about assessment, I do think that ultimately it would be something that if I was given no direction and I was able to set my own goals for the district, it would be one that, that I would, I would set. So um, I focused on actually both reading and math, uh, third through eighth grade for improvement in proficiency across the board, because I think about um the interim goals that go along with that are goals that you focus on around growth. And so um that's, so that's mine for English, for E L A or reading and math. Um, for high school, I focused on high school performance on graduation-required E O Cs, which would include Algebra One and English Two, so in alignment with whatever I heard from everyone else. And then my other was graduation rate. In terms of the percentages, I did give percentages. I based mine on a five-year trajectory, so I looked at the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven year, um, one that I thought was a more realistic goal. And the other, I used North Star earlier, but that wasn't the, the, the right way, um, as a North Star goal as well. So I used a, a more attainable and then what I consider to be a stretch goal.
For sharing that.
Any other reflections? And Cindy, you want to take us through the next steps?
Or did anyone have any other reflections on what you've heard so far tonight from your colleagues? And I, I think also when we, when, when you're thinking through and landing on, you know, how many of these goals do you want to set? How specific do you want to get about grade level? Um, uh, certain populations, what have you? Um, and then the, how the resources, you know, we talked earlier about a context of limited resources. How um that is also something that's going to play into what that target percentage is going to be able to be. Um, because if you are uh focusing resources across a number of grade levels, across a number of goals, then you can expect that um your targets are likely going to need to be lower because uh without being able to target more resources into a few things, um, they're going to be spread thinner. So to accommodate for that, that target percentage often needs to um look passively a little lower than what, what uh some of the numbers you maybe have, have put forward. So just another, another thing to be thinking about as well.
Cindy, if I can add one more thing there, I also did um my numbers as averages, so across the grade levels instead of individual numbers. Um, because I think when we really drill into the individual grade levels, we know where we're trying to go, but to think that we may get all of them at the same place at one time, that's why I did it across in terms of an average versus this for third, this for fourth, this for fifth. So while it is individual to some degree, it's still the focus on the overall content area as a whole, um, as we think about resourcing.
Thank you. Okay, so I think um it's ten, almost ten after the hour right now, and I think um, I think we've we've had a, a good discussion um about the, about the goals that everyone has thought through thus far. Um, I think what we'll plan to do is that for next, next time we meet, which I will be there with you actually in person next time, um, we'll pick up with, with the goals then and um, give you some time to reflect and ruminate on what you've heard this evening um from your colleagues and think, think further through what you've put out there. Um, and if there's anything that, anything else that you'd like to bring to the table um next week or uh any, any um revisions that you'd like to make to what you've already put forward, and then we'll pick up with that uh collaborative process of narrowing down um narrowing down. What we'll also look at next time then is your guardrails, and those are the statements, the thou shalt not stake statements um grounded in values of the community and the things that you want protected along the way to achieving the goals. So again, those should be um iterated in, in the um shalt not language, and that's, and that is because guardrails, even though they seem negative, um, we, we do it that way to allow freedom to the superintendent. We're protecting a value while giving freedom for the superintendent to choose strategies and a pathway to achieving the goals, um, leaving her actually more than one option. So uh, we can, we can talk more about that, and um I will be available as well as uh the rest of the support team that you've been hearing from Leslie and, and some Ben and Rodney and some of the others can be available this week as you're continuing to think through and process through all of this. Um, if there's anything you want to bounce around before we come together again next week. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Ray. I think Mr. Craig had a comment or question.
Uh, just a reminder for folks who have uh, that, that there are also the forms that are out there for signing up for the conversations with our community engagement as well as community outreach. So if you haven't already, this is a reminder to make sure that folks that are signing up for that. If you have any troubles getting signed in, let folks know. Uh, but the goal again is to have at least uh six different ones so that we can try and as much as possible have every board member partner up with another board member um to ensure that we can talk to the community, reach out. Again, also feel free to go back and look at places you've already signed up, and if there are areas where, for instance, no one signed up with you, and there are other areas which you might be willing to do, um, partner with someone, you feel free to update and, and amend that. And that way, that also gets that process going. So once we have our goals and guardrails, we can get the community running and start building those conversations up uh as quickly as possible.
Anything else, Ray or Cindy, before we move on with our evening? You all got us through this fifteen minutes early despite our twenty-minute process digression, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Um, we will uh say goodbye to our Governance Coaching uh crew. We'll catch you next time. Enjoy your evening. Um, and uh move right on with our uh rest of our agenda. We were in our committee report section. Um, we heard from the Chair of the Student Achievement Committee. Uh, we're going to hear next from the Chair of the Ad Hoc Boundaries Committee, uh, who is Dr. Moffett.
Okay, in the best interest of time, I'll be as brief as possible. We had a meeting on um August the tenth. We, our next meeting for the public is going to be September the fourteenth, which is this Wednesday, this week. We did discuss the historical uh review of boundary lines and the legal parameters. We had um the district attorney and um the assistant counsel give us um some history. In short, and I'll just give you some highlights, uh, since two thousand and one, the district has not implemented any major redistricting except for the creation of new boundaries for the High Park School and the Clifton Area Neighborhood School. Um, and again, these minutes are on board docs, which um are on the website. Um, just, I'm highlighting some specifics. The district made a switch from neighborhood high schools to high schools of choice in the early two thousands. Um, the charge, we reiterated that charge, charge of the ad hoc committee is um for attendance boundaries, it's to work with the administration and the community to reevaluate boundary lines for elementary schools and to also assess the current state and make recommendations to the board. Um, there were, oh, wait, one more thing from a historical perspective. Besides the central corridor, the board committee and administration turned towards the east side to address the overcrowding of Pleasant Ridge Montessori under enrollment of two east side magnets, Woodford and Silverton, the need for additional east side preschool seats, the changing development of, in Madison Mill, which the district had been a party due to its relationship with MedPace and the district's acquisition of Lighthouse. And so those are just some of the historical notes. Um, there were three action items that were coming out, that came out, I think four actually, and we will be discussing them on Wednesday. Um, the ad hoc attendance boundary committee will discuss the history of the Meridian Plan at the next meeting. Uh, a little bit more history there. Um, Superintendent Wright advised the committee to allow her administration to analyze programming that already exists in the schools before moving forward, so we will hear that. Uh, she advised that she would like to analyze the program and then report to the board about where the gaps occur interest for certain areas and how programs are being built for the school, and then market what is currently in place. Um, then the other action item is that the administration will determine which schools are or are not magnet schools, look at how schools are designated, determine what percentage of students live or do not live in the neighborhood boundary lines, and do an audit of the schools and determine the neighborhood schools that do not carry the name of the neighborhood. Um, and the administration will look at out-of-boundary schools to determine if they're really magnets as well. really magnets as well. The next meeting is Wednesday, September 14th at 4:00 PM. And I submit these notes and in their entirety as, as written.
Thank you, Chair, Dr. Moffett. Do folks have questions for the ad hoc attendance boundaries committee? I have one and it's very quick. My, I think this is on app for this meeting this week was to start to develop a work plan that would chair back. I'm not sure of how long that takes. It may, may take a couple meetings, but is that something that's on the committee's agenda?
That is definitely, we're kind of in the historical perspective at the moment. And from the last of, hopefully this will be our last meeting with the historical perspective, we were going to draft a work plan in collaboration with the superintendent. Now superintendent Wright is not going to be there, so we may have to, you know, we may have to have that over time. But yes, that was the goal, is to take the historical perspective with the information from administration and draft a work plan. I will say this, that our, our next meeting is this Wednesday. The, the meeting after that is October 25th, and then we do not meet in November. So we will meet again in December. So those are just some dates that are coming up and that is the goal, draft a plan.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the chair of the committee? Okay, can we have then Mr. Craig present the report from the committee of the whole?
Sure. The committee of the whole minutes are from the August 10th meeting. Just really quickly, we went over the governance coaching updates regarding the next stage steps and the specifically the goals and guardrails as well as the engagement and outreach. The superintendent previewed the dashboard for some of the data monitoring as well as some information regarding schools readiness for opening. Finally, we had a discussion with regards to the attendance boundaries work that, that Dr. Moffett already spoke to as they had a meeting subsequent to this one. So the only action item was to create a timeline or a, in a work plan for the, for the ad hoc boundaries committee, for which Dr. Moffett has already specified. So I submit these minutes as written.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions? We were all there, I think. But any questions about the report from the committee of the whole? Okay, moving on to our last committee report from Mrs. Weinberg on health and safety.
All right. So the health and safety committee met on Monday, August the 15th. In attendance were the health and safety committee members, our administration, superintendent Irenetta Wright, our CPS government liaisons and our community partners, which were represented from the Cincinnati Health Department and then the Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center. First up on the agenda, we had our government liaison, Eric Kearney. He provided the committee within August 2022 report of all the bills pending in the House, the Senate, the primary and secondary education committees, and of course, the State House. We then moved on to having an update from our community partners in which Dr. Amin and Dr. Musman gave us a COVID-19 and a monkeypox update. They also shared with us that we would be following the school measures for COVID-19 safety as of August the 11th, 2022. Committee member Jones inquired about the rise of polio and there was some discussion on that. We then went on to move on to our superintendent in which she gave a update about Governor Mike DeWine's K through 12 safety grant program, in which 20 of our CPS schools were awarded a $50,000 grant. We then moved on and superintendent Wright gave a safety update for CPS schools. She went over the safety town hall presentation. She reported that safety is the district's top priority as well as being committed to developing training and implementing safety support and response systems to ensure secure learning environments for all of our students and our staff. Superintendent Wright also further discussed about creating a safety task force. And other than that, a board member recommended, board member Moffett recommended that a student from each school could apply to become part of the task force. There was no other business that was discussed after that and the meeting was adjourned. So I do submit my committee meeting notes as written and I hope for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any questions on the health and safety committee report? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion to adopt all the committee reports, please. Second. Thank you, Vice President Jones. Do you have a second? Thank you, Dr. Moffett. We've had our discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, committee reports are approved. So we're now on item G for our evening, which is resolutions. We have a first resolution about a nomination for the preschool promise board of managers. Is there a board member who'd be willing to introduce this motion? Thank you. I think Ms. Bolton, I have you for a next one and Mr. Marowski raised his hand, so I might do Mr. Marowski on this one. That's all.
Is that okay, Ms. Bolton? Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you so much.
I would have done it better, but you know.
Well, see, all that training, for, for what? I am honored to present a resolution nominating Marcia A. Futel to the preschool promise board of managers. And for those, just a quick editorial note who do not know, the preschool promise board of managers has folks nominated from us and from the Promise Forward folks and United Way folks and community people. And so we nominate five and we would like to nominate Marcia Futel. I present it as written.
Thank you, Mr. Marowski. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Motion carries. We're on to resolution number two, which is going to be like, I think, President Jones, Vice President Jones?
Okay. I would like to introduce a resolution appointing an official delegate to the Ohio School Boards Association's 2022 Capitol Conference. And I will not read it, but that nomination is, is for Carolyn Jones as its official delegate and in discussion. We will need to appoint an alternate. And I just wanted to explain, well, let's, let's get the motion on, yeah, get it on the floor.
So we have a motion? And we will have a chance for, to discuss the alternate in a moment here, but is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Now, some discussion.
In discussion. So Carolyn Jones is already the OSBA appointee on the Board of Trustees. And typically for that person to serve as the delegate, since I know what's going on on the board, so it just makes sense. However, it is open for discussion if people don't want Carolyn Jones to be the delegate.
Who is this Carolyn Jones person they keep talking about?
I gotta add a little fun. It's been a rough night. Okay. So, but we do have to have, we do need to name an alternate in the event that Carolyn Jones can't make it.
So is there anybody who would like to volunteer to serve as an alternate for Vice President Jones? So we have a request from Dr. Moffett. Is there anybody else who would like to do it? Because we can have a, we can have a vote here if, if we would have more than one interested person.
I nominate Kareem Moffett.
Okay, so we have a, we have, I think, a friendly amendment to the person who gave the motion to fill in Dr. Kareem Moffett as the alternate. And the, the, sorry, so the, the motion's been amended and the current motion on the floor has Dr. Kareem Moffett as the alternate. Any other discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none. Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Marowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, moving on to resolution three. My understanding is that this will be jointly introduced by member Bolton and member Weinberg. And I want to give each a chance to introduce the piece that they'd like.
Thank you. We'll read it after the motion is made and seconded. And then we'd like to have the privilege of reading it in its total.
That's great. So we have a.
So like to introduce and move that a resolution to continue the Cincinnati Public Schools' commitment to providing for the health and safety of all students and to continue to support the Cincinnati Police Department School Resource Officers Program. So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. We're open for discussion if you'd like to read and that would be great.
I'd like to read if I might. Thank you. Whereas both Cincinnati Public Schools and the wider communities of greater Cincinnati have made a mutual commitment to the health and safety of our students, staff, partners, visitors, and the community itself. Whereas that mutual commitment helped build our facilities master plan, manage our efforts during the COVID emergency, allowed us to continue to expand our school-based primary and mental health services that lead the state, and assume district responsibility to provide free transportation to our students. And whereas social and cultural conditions have recently heightened concerns about health and safety, certain advocates and the board and the administration have called for a review of some established policies, practices and partner agreements. And whereas the passage of Board Policy 2255 Equity and Excellence in Education adopted in 2016 and 2256 Anti-Racism adopted in 2020 have influenced those reviews. And whereas measured against such policies, personalities of student outcomes, incomplete implementation of school services and a lack of clarity about roles and responsibilities have been identified. And whereas the available information of ongoing efforts has been inadequately shared by the district, creating misunderstandings of all the relevant services, programs and efforts provided by the district. And whereas the laws of the state and its municipalities require that the city of Cincinnati and other in-district jurisdictional police agencies respond and serve our schools. And whereas 55 years ago, the Cincinnati Public Schools District and the city of Cincinnati formed the School Resource Officers Program to serve the schools within the Cincinnati city limits. And whereas the School Resource Officers Program provided such benefits as regularized presence of, for safety, mentorship, community policing in the schools, building rapport with students through informal contact and activities, enforcing traffic laws on school campuses and attending activities beyond the school day. And.
Whereas among many of the district's efforts and services and partners have all gone under varying levels of scrutiny, it has been the district's partnership with the city of Cincinnati and specifically the manner in which the district and the city have ensured the services of Cincinnati police officers that has been the primary point of interest of the public. And whereas much has changed over these five decades and police services have evolved, the need for professional police resource officers availability for schools within the city of Cincinnati remains. And whereas currently the district and the city have a memorandum of understanding that provides for more than one dozen distinct especially trained police members based in the 15 CPS schools housing high school grades. And whereas those officers are also responders to more than 40 CPS elementary schools as well as approximately 79 CPS schools in Cincinnati. And whereas the city of Cincinnati assumes responsibility for resourcing, training, managing and financing the assigned officers. And whereas the district is cognizant of our responsibility to all children of school ages residing within our district attendance boundaries. And whereas this board intends to continue its long-held commitment to providing first and foremost for the health and safety of all students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Cincinnati Public Schools will continue its relationship with the city of Cincinnati in order to maintain and continue one of the nation's first school resource officer program. And be it further resolved that in respect to Board Policies 2255 and 2256 and the community engagement and advocacy, as well as the board valuing the expertise of the district's administration, the Board of Education and of the Cincinnati Public Schools commits to a stronger emphasis on implementing and monitoring the district's existing restorative justice program, build more social and emotional lessons into our curriculum, and leverage our districts and private sector mental health professionals at every school. And be it finally resolved that the district will engage in periodic reviews of the District and City School Resource Officers Program, MOU, and participate in joint training with and from our school resource officers so all parties have a better understanding of both our separate and mutual responsibilities to provide safe and healthy learning environments for all of our students at every school. I hope that this is accepted, our resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton and Mrs. Weinberg. Other discussion on the resolution before we vote. Ms. Marowski?
Thanks, President Lindy, and thank you, Ms. Bolton and Ms. Weinberg. Unsurprising probably to anyone who's attended or watched any of these meetings or my colleagues. I will vote no on this this evening, but I just want to take a few minutes, if that's, if I may, and sort of explain why and tee up an assignment that I'll probably have at the end of this meeting, because I believe this will probably pass. If it doesn't, then my assignment won't matter. But if it passes, my assignment will be relevant. So I'd like to start with, with likes. And again, Ms. Weinberg, Ms. Bolton, thank you for putting this together so that we could talk about it. I believe Ms. Jones, Vice President Jones, at some point, you know, we went around and around about this, made this statement like, let's, we need to, I'll use my phrase, tear the Band-Aid off one way or the other and either commit to this or not. And I think that's right. And so again, if we do commit to this this evening, I have a few things I'd like to assign at the end that hopefully my colleagues will be amenable to. Something I would like to point out, though, that I do like, in the first few whereses, I really appreciate the drafters noting available information of our ongoing efforts for whether it's restorative practice, veteran mental health efforts have been inadequately shared by the district. And I do think it bears noting, while I will vote no on this, that we have invested a great deal and I think we've done a better job, particularly in the past couple of years, and not just with the extra money we got because of COVID, but just with our regular budgetary constraints, providing situations where kids, mental health, et cetera, is prioritized. So I think that was important to put in there. You know, the, the, the end, the be it further resolved, a stronger emphasis on implementing restorative practice, more social emotional lessons, leveraging our district private sector mental health partnerships, yes, to all of these things. You know, there's one massive whereas where we disagree and it is that there is a need for professional police resource officers in our schools. I, I'm not there and I haven't gotten there over the past few years. And again, for those who weren't on the board, a few of the folks up here have been here before COVID, when I was assigning, I wanted to see the MOU, what's the MOU look like? Assigning to health and safety when it first got invented, when it broke off as student achievement, what is the data that counters this ACLU or Young Activist data we're seeing? I still haven't seen that and that's why I have a hard time voting yes. Again, anecdotal data, yeah, I think so. I, I haven't seen the compelling data to make me want to vote yes on this, though. And so, you know, if it passes, I think where, and I think some of the young people and their sort of allies this evening spoke to this, that the power lies somewhere in the MOU and I appreciate that it's on here to be reevaluated. I think I would have liked to seen a stronger MOU before voting on this. And so all of my assignments, and there's three, and we heard a lot of it tonight as well, regarding like parent notification, letting students know of their civil rights if they're interacting with a cop, and de-escalation being a mandatory part of the SRO's, you know, interaction with kids. So if this passes, I'll bring those up again later, but I just wanted, you know, the drafters, out of respect to them, I do appreciate y'all bringing us something to vote on and Ms. Jones for sort of pushing us like, let's just do this. We have to do this one way or another. But I just wanted to let y'all know, that's why I'll be voting no tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Marowski. Other board members have discussion on the resolution? Vice President Jones?
Yes, just a very brief comment. Thank you. Yes, we've come to this point because of all the work that has gone into this and all the effort and we knew it was time to make a decision about it. I do want to say, however, I do want to say in addition to that, that some, some, we had a group of students who were persistent about expressing their views and they need to know that we do appreciate that. I do appreciate that and that some of us may not agree with what they were asking for or have differences of opinion. We certainly recognize the strength of their voice. And so this is a very comprehensive resolution and it really. And so, this is a very comprehensive resolution, and it really explained, and I can tell that Ms. Bolton and Ms. Weinberg did it, because that's just who they are, but it's very well-written, and it covers really all the phases of this, and explains really why it's important to have this vote tonight, no matter what we, how it turns out. But I just want to, in closing, strongly encourage our administration and others to be fairly, to be very consistent and persistent in making sure that youth voice is heard at all levels, including this. We have a lot to learn from this. If it's passed, I'm sure there's more work to do on it, and I just want to encourage that we make sure that we get youth voice and get it across the diverse population of students in our district.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Other board members have comments before we vote? Dr. Moffett?
I'll be very brief. I don't want to repeat what my colleagues have said, but I do want to note that the students brought up some really good point, well, they brought up some points that I want to make sure that I touch on, and then ask the administration for something. They said that we've been ignoring, they said, you've been ignoring us for years. They want a comprehensive restorative justice program, and you have not been ignored at all. We have actually listened to you. And just because it's not the result that you want doesn't mean that we're not listening. Your voices do matter, and I want that to be made sure that they understand that. The SROs are not funded by CPS. So when they made the statement about, we're taking money and we could be putting that money someplace else, that's not, it's not completely accurate. And then they made a comment that police are a response to crime and can never prevent it, and I really disagree with that. We've got some excellent SROs who are wonderful people, dedicated to youth, and they are preventing, they are preventing crime. So this is a very well-written resolution. Thank you to my colleagues for all of their hard work, but my ask to the administration is that we continue with the momentum and bring the Young Activist Coalition and any other student group that feels that they would like to work on this to the table. I think that their voices do matter. They've demonstrated that they can definitely organize, and that they have power in their numbers, and it's significant. And so what I think the next step should be is that they are at the table, and that they fully understand and are incorporated in working with maybe training from SROs, learning more about what it is that they do, so that they can implement the changes that they seek on maybe a different level. Thank you to my colleagues very much.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Other discussion or questions? If no other board members have any, I'll share a few. Do you want to go ahead? Ms. Bolton? Yeah, please.
I really appreciate the work of our staff and administration, and really appreciate the advice throughout this effort that our new superintendent has provided us. I too, as a person that spent 36 years in teaching kids about civics and being good citizens, have appreciated the advocacy, and I think you can see the result of their advocacy in this resolution as to what we are committing to do. I also feel very strongly, and I, you know, Mr. Murawski and I don't usually disagree, but it is, it's a philosophy kind of thing. From me, we will have the SROs here for this year under contract. We have many things that we can improve upon, but one of the most salient things for me was at the Superintendent's Safety Town Hall, when both Iris Rowley, who is perhaps the leading voice on the collaborative regarding police and community relations, endorsed the SROs, spoke glowingly of the SROs and the value that they have within our schools. And then frankly, that position was obviously seconded by the interim police chief, but more importantly, that testament to the value of the SROs was seconded by the Chair of the NAACP's Education Committee, Jennifer Myrie, who also said that she believed very strongly that, from her perspective, these are needed folks that are important to our district and our schools, but most importantly, important to our families, as she emphasized. So it's time, it's time to make the decision, and appreciate the efforts of the citizens and also the staff and fellow board members, a couple of who are not here. This has been such a long discussion. So it'll be time to vote, and thank you.
Thank you, Member Bolton. Any other discussion? I'll just share a few, I'll turn out to repeat items, because my colleagues have shared many of the pieces I was going to share. I wanted to just check and confirm a couple of things with our administration. Superintendent, my understanding is everything in this resolution is consistent with what we heard from the focus groups that we did. I know this was before your time, but there was some extensive work done with students, with principals, with families, and as I read those reports from across the district, it feels very consistent with what this resolution is proposing. I wanted to check that that was true.
It is commensurate with the feedback we've received, specifically in the reports that you're referencing.
I try to vote in line with what the people most directed are asking for, and so it does a lot of work with me that the focus groups we conducted, what they shared is what's here in the resolution. The second thing was, I won't repeat, but just that there are very real pieces of this resolution that are informed directly by the student activism that we've seen. And I echo what my colleague, Dr. Moffett, shared, that just because we did not, or that the resolution may not do everything that students asked for, I do think there are some very real things in here that are reflective of that. And then Superintendent, my understanding, we mentioned this a few meetings ago, but this is consistent with what you think the right thing to do is for our district as well.
It is consistent with my experiences and what I've shared with the team, as well as what we shared in the Safety Town Hall.
Great, thank you very much. And so lastly, before I close here, I just wanted to say, you know, it may be the case, it will likely be the case, that there will be ongoing activism of all kinds on this issue, and that there's no assumption on my end that that would necessarily change. And I also share personally, I care a great deal about reducing racial disparities in student discipline. And so as we continue through this goals and guardrails process, I will advocate that that be a piece of it, because I think that's an important role we can play as a board to having a more racially just school district. So with that, unless there's any follow-up discussion, I'll ask Ms. Wagner to call the roll.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
No.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So that is the end of our resolutions section. We're going to move right into our Superintendent of Schools section. Mrs. Weinberg, do we have any retirements to announce this evening?
Yes, I have a couple. First, I'm going to start with our certificated personnel. We have two retirees. Up first is Cynthia L. Kent. She's a teacher at SCPA. Next, we have Karen Russell, who is an intervention specialist from TAV High School. Moving on to our civil service personnel, we have four individuals. I'm going to start with Nadine Adams, a lunchroom manager from Dater High School, Trina Kelly, a paraprofessional from Sands, Sonya Sheehy from Sand, and last but not least, Kathleen A. Jones, senior accounting technician from the Treasurer's Department. And might I add that Kathleen is retiring after 44 years of service to this district. So let's give her a round of applause, and also our other retirees. We want to wish them all the best, and we want to thank them for their service and their commitment to CPS and our students, and that is it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Weinberg, and thank you for mentioning the number of years of service. We need a motion to accept the recommendations of our superintendent.
Second.
Thank you, Member Bolton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Murawski. Any discussion on the superintendent's recommendations? Hearing none, Ms. Wagner, would you, just kidding? Okay, Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Do we have a motion to accept the revised report of the Treasurer this evening?
So move.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion or questions on the revised Treasurer's Report? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, the Treasurer would, or General Counsel would address on page 14, the CRA that pertains to Silverton Village. This is gone before Finance and agreed to in Finance, as is usually the case with CRAs, but we don't have the Finance. It's not time tonight to do the Finance minutes as well as everything else, so, but the Finance Committee has taken action on this, and either the, or both, the Treasurer and General Counsel will update us.
It has moved through Finance. We have advised Silverton that it could be approved tonight or next week. There's a meeting again on Monday, and we told them that it could be on the night. That answer your question?
What is it? Tell us what it is.
Oh, the Silverton CRA, sure. The City of Silverton approached us, together with a developer that they're working with, to develop a multi-use residential property, and they asked for abatement. The Finance Committee, in considering this, recommended an abatement that is the same as what is offered in the City of Cincinnati under our master agreement, and that's what we moved forward. It would have a pilot payment to the district of 33%, or 35, 33%, excuse me, matching exactly what is offered in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bolton. Are there any other discussion points or questions on the revised Treasurer's Report? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are on to Board Matters, where we may have a safety and security topic, we also may not. Is there anyone who wanted to raise a safety and security question? I think we're in good shape there. So I think we had a chance to discuss a lot of questions at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Wednesday, and I think a lot of the topics that we had in queues for tonight got answered on Wednesday. So we'll move on then to inquiries and updates. Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes, Board President Lindy, I just have a quick question regarding an update on our assignment tracker sheet that is, I think, just wanted an update on if it was going to be updated, how frequent, how often. I'm not quite sure if it's being done, so that was the question on that.
Do you know, and if you notice, no problem, Mrs. Weinberg, the last time it was updated?
I am not sure. Maybe we could ask maybe another board member who may have looked at the sheet recently. Not quite sure.
If anybody up board member does know, I think what I was trying to remember is what the, what the established timeline was.
I don't remember. That's why I think I'm bringing it up to get clarification.
Yeah.
I can offer a personal perspective.
Vice President Jones?
I think there was some confusion around the whole intent of it. I know it's there, but I think, I don't recall personally us having a board-level conversation about exactly what Ms. Weinberg is saying. So, and I don't know if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I don't recall us having that conversation about timeframe from when it would be reported back, or any kind of continuity with that.
My understanding was that this was an effort to make sure that there was real strong visibility into assignments that were coming out of board meetings.
Absolutely, and we did discuss it, and I don't know, Phyllis, if you're able to remember the information regarding that, if you'd like to share that. Okay, thank you, I just wanted clarification on that.
That works for you, Mrs. Weinberg?
It does.
Anyone else have questions about the, Superintendent?
Yeah, I do, I have a question. So I do see that it was updated, I want to say in August, but I just, I think the way that we were, that I was using it, just to make sure that that's what the expectation is, I send the information and copy Ms. Davis on whatever response that I'm giving, and then she actually does the update on the tracker. Yes, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Good, great. I think the idea, and again, please tell me if I'm incorrect in any of this, is that if we say that there's an assignment to, you know, blank, a member of the administration for X, Y, or Z at a given board meeting, we'd be able to look back and see the date by which that was finished? Yeah, great.
Question, and I won't belabor it, but just for me, in case I'm missing something, is it, is it, is it, when you say tracker, is that information forwarded to board members, or how will we, where do we go to look for this information? Ms. Weinberg?
Do you want to go?
I'm going to let Dr. Moffett answer this question.
She don't even let me answer it.
Thank you, remember.
I'm pulling it to the board. All of the board members are viewers. Phyllis and Pat are editors, along with the superintendent, so they put the information in, and we can just view it. It's just a way, and it actually says in the bylaws that we have a way to kind of see where everything is. So it was to put everything in one space. What was happening is, we'd have an assignment, or someone would ask a question, and then a month or two later, it would be like, didn't I ask that question? So there was just no space to find out if you had actually asked a question or if it was answered. So we worked with the superintendent back in the first governance training on putting it all in one space. Phyllis and Pat edited, they're the only ones that can edit it, and all of the board members were sent a link. So it's in your email. Everybody was...
Recently?
I would say probably back in the summer.
Okay. So thank you, Dr. Moffett. I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just going to suggest, would it work for our board staff to send that link out around again to everybody, just in case? And I have a feeling that like different board members are going to want to use this more frequently than others. Nobody has to use it. It's there for transparency and visibility. It is a public record available to anybody who would like to see it, and it's, and I think that it'll be very helpful for some, and if other board members choose not to use it, that is 100% their decision. Superintendent?
So just for clarity, so when you say, no one has to use it, so what's being put on this?
No, no board member has to use it, I should say.
Okay, so for me, if it's an assignment that's done in the meeting...
That's right.
Because that's the only place that I get assignments.
That's right.
Then it will go on the tracker, and then the team will continue...
That's right.
...update it, because I don't update it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, you got it. Okay, other inquiries and updates? Member Bolton?
Yes, just an inquiry. First of all, thank you for getting whatever status we have regarding the crossing guard list. I think that's very important, so thank you for that. And then also, we've had many other things to worry about, but going back a couple of months, I think it will be very useful if the current administration were able to review the status of the now included strategic plan, and what, what has, we think has been accomplished, what we don't think's been accomplished. I just think that that would be very useful as we proceed, knowing that two of our years were COVID years. So I just wanted to remind you, because that's been an assignment already, and just, but we've been preoccupied with actually getting the district to function.
Thank you, Member Bolton. Superintendent, do you have any questions or...
I don't think I have questions. The, we're working through the process, so we did get the information to do the updates. There are gaps in information, honestly, so we will hit the deadline and get it back and make sure that we can give the update.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Member Bolton. Any other inquiries or updates? I have one. There was some meaningful communication over the course of the last week about athletics and transportation. Would you mind, Superintendent, briefly just sharing the current state of where we are on that front?
Yes, definitely. So we, last week, we know that since the beginning of the school year, we have had some challenges around transportation. Over the last couple of weeks, last few weeks, we've had some athletic games that had to be rescheduled due to athletic, due to not having athletic transportation. Last week, there was some information that actually got out to families that wasn't accurate, that it just wasn't information that we put out to families. We're still... We're still trying to figure out where that happened, but it spread very, very quickly. And so we were able to work with the team, clarify where we were, and the way that some of the misinformation actually occurred was there were some teams that had already organized their own transportation at a couple of our schools, and that wasn't shared with me, honestly. And so once that was shared, we were able to talk through the process, give those parents still the authorization that they wanted. We thought we were helping by not giving authorization and then found out that we actually were not helping, and so we were able to correct that. As we move forward, we did get an update from First Student on yesterday, yesterday, an update for them. So we do have some additional service vehicles that are coming in, and so we're hopeful that we will be able to offer transportation across the board, but those families, we've been able to notify them upfront so that they're already prepared, so that it's not a hit or miss. I think the second thing that will come up as a concern, I just received the proposal today, because we have elementary athletics that are now coming up. And what we were doing at the schools was two buses in the afternoon, and honestly, we just do not have the inventory right now to do the same. So we're looking at how we may be able to do an intramural kind of process with our elementary students, but I just, I just received the proposal, so I have to review that and then determine where we go next.
Thank you, Superintendent. And could you, while we have you on this topic, could you say, you know, I think, just on transportation, on yellow buses more broadly, how are things going? And I think for any, you know, we'll occasionally hear from parents who are concerned with the work that still needs to happen, can you talk a little bit about just what kinds of creative options you all have looked into for parents who might be asking that question?
I definitely can. So from the beginning, from the first day of school up until now, we have had just a lot of improvement overall with the on-time performance of the yellow buses. I think that I've been very transparent in sharing that we are probably in need right now of about 30 additional buses, that even if we had the buses, our contractors don't have the drivers for those buses. So we have worked really strategically with them to look at all of the additional options from the very beginning, and I do think it's relevant, my team and I were actually talking about this today, but since you did ask the question, I do think that it's relevant for us to share the kind of communication that we've been able to do around transportation for yellow buses since the, since the beginning. So since August the 18th through the 11th, we've done eight calls, robo-calls or texts across the board, K-12. We've done four surveys, two for our K-8 families, that asked them to share with us if they wanted to still have yellow bus services for our seventh and eighth grade students. We have done 34 unique posts on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, which are our district official pages. We've had over 100,000 impressions on those pages, on those specific stories. From our web analytics, we've had 25,793-page views of our transportation stories as well. And we have had 83 articles, interviews, inclusive of our broadcast, newsprint, radio blog, so forth and so on, around transportation. And lastly, we've had almost 7 million reader and viewership information from over 80,000 public, from our 80,000 media mentions around transportation. So I share that because at this point, we, we're doing everything that we can to make sure that our families are getting the information. So from the beginning, there has been improvement in yellow buses. We are offering seventh and eighth grade students the opportunity to ride yellow buses. We have about 500 families that have taken advantage of that. We are working, our, we had a meeting with Metro just today, because all of our students that have requested bus services have been provided their bus cards. We have about 400 that we're still getting duplicate cards out to, but they do have the opportunity to ride the buses this week without a fee, and then on Monday, they will have to have a card, or there is a fee for that. The RFI cards that route to the individual students, I shared before, that those will not be available to us. At the latest, it could be as much as eight to 12 weeks. And so our, the important part for us is that we provided the list to Metro for what we need. They provided us passes for our students, so until we are able to get, until they were able to get those updated cards, the ones that they had were defective. So the, where parents can really help us at this point, there are two major areas. One, they can help us by making sure their address information is updated at the school level. Our data is only as good as the address information that we have. The second is if they are not riding the bus, and that means if they're not riding the yellow bus, or if they're not riding Metro, if they'll also notify us of that if they have a bus that's assigned to them, because those students are still included in our routes. We had our last update on September the 6th. We saw that there was, that cleared up a lot of things during that time, which is this is a normal process at the beginning of the year. The next update is on September 19th, so we will ask families, we'll continue to remind them, but we will ask families to make sure they can access Power School, so when there is an update, they're able to access the information there and make sure that they see any bus changes. Every time we add a student to a route, it adds 30 to 45 seconds to that route. So if we have students that we are stopping at stops and the students are not coming to that particular stop, it's adding 30 to 45 seconds to someone else. So it's really important that we're able to clean that data.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other inquiries or updates? Dr. Moffett?
So at our financial town, it was brought up that we could potentially use SRO funds for incentives for getting drivers for buses. As an inquiry, can you all look into that so that we could maybe incentivize some of, some drivers to maybe get on board?
Yeah, so we'd actually talked about that right before Town Hall, so I don't know at what part of the conversation that came up. We talked about it for two reasons. One, we can use SRO to also purchase our own vans so that we have them and can cover our staff to drive them. Two, we can use those funds for incentives as well. We have gotten some follow-up from our bus contractors, at least one of them, one of the three, that's giving some recommendations for what we see across industry standards right now and the kind of incentives they are seeing that is responsive to that ask. We just received that, I believe it was yesterday, we met with them on Friday, we made that ask of them, I'm sorry, on Thursday, we made that ask of them, and they were able to provide that for us on yesterday. So now we have to take it and review it and then bring it back, you know, to the board in terms of next steps.
So can, can that be a formal assignment? I don't know. It's under inquiries, but can I just, do I formalize it as an assignment?
Why don't we come back to it under assignments in just one second?
Yeah, so I think as we're working through the assignment part of it, I think giving us an opportunity to collect all of the information with the time for us to come back before we're able to get to, this is something that's just as urgent for us across the board, and so if we're able to do this, it would be something that we're working on urgently to get done. So whether it's an assignment or not, it is something that we'll bring back.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other inquiries or updates before we move to assignments? Okay, let's move to assignments. Dr. Moffett, did you have an assignment you wanted to offer?
Oh, the bus incentive, obviously. And then I would like to formalize, if possible, maybe a task force between the Young Activist Coalition and maybe the head of our district's security, because he's been a CPD officer before, so maybe that would be a good mix. But if we could formalize a youth task force specifically around safety, I'd really appreciate that.
So in our, man.
Go ahead, please.
In our last, I think in our last health and safety meeting, we talked about a task force that was more collective around student voice as well, with some of the concerns we've had around transportation, we've just waited instead of setting up and doing those activities. So I would ask that we open it up a little bit more than just the Young Activist Coalition, where they would be invited and included, but it would definitely include students from around the district that are giving feedback in that area as well.
Well, I think my ask, maybe then it's, there's multiple ones. I would specifically like to have young voices around SROs if we could, because I think that that's a significant population and that data needs to happen, and I think that there are more students that probably would want to be involved than the Young Activist Coalition. So I think that it's definitely doable to expand it, but I'm specifically thinking about utilizing our district-wide personnel that deal with safety, particularly Mr. Bell, because he's been a police officer, but around that, and then an additional young, young voice task force.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. I think one of the things I appreciate about all of my colleagues in the administration is that we're all trying to, I think, make sure we present assignments during the relevant part of the meeting, and that assignments are only good if a majority of board members approve them. So I think there were two that were just laid out. One was that there be, I think, like a, like a recommendation on incentives for bus drivers presented in upcoming board meeting, like hopefully Monday, but I think as soon as you could do it well. And then a second request, which was that there be young voices around SROs in some ongoing fashion. And I want to check with the board, like, is there any concern with either of those two? I don't have any, but I think, Member Bolton?
I wouldn't suggest it's a concern, but for the incentives for bus drivers, we subsidized last year significantly the bus companies' capacity to pay their bus drivers at some great amount of dollars. So we've done that before. It might be good to, maybe the assignment is to review what benefit that had and how much that cost us, is we were literally subsidizing bus drivers' pay last year, if I recall. And I think that the, I have a question for the, about the students and the SROs. Superintendent, do you have a student advisory group?
That's in process. That's why I was asking the question. I would, my, my request would be that it becomes a topic of a group versus a specific task force for that purpose.
Oh, if I might, I would suggest that that cabinet of students, or however, the advisory group of students, maybe this would be a topic for them, because then it would be perhaps more representative, knowing your approach, it's going to be pretty representative. So I think it's an important topic to have, but I'd kind of like to institutionalize it into that group as you get that formed.
So as the, as, thank you, Member Bolton, I think as the person who made the initial suggestion for assignment, Dr. Moffett, is that consistent with what you were thinking or is that different?
It's really not, but I'm fine with that. I think that there's, that there is a significant enough voice and community advocacy around that topic to have its own group, other than that it just be something that comes up at the moment and then you're moving towards something else. But that's, but, you know, I think something is better than nothing at this point. So I specifically named that particular group because I know that you named the chair of the education committee, you've named Iris Rowley, we've got, we can talk about safety from the collaborative agreement, we can talk about safety with respect to the city. I mean, there was so many, so much around policing that we could talk about that is its own topic. But again, something is better than nothing. I'd rather see something started, however, whatever we're going to call it, but I'm specifically asking that a group of students work with our district leadership that's dealing with security already. I think he'd be great, because he is a former police officer, and so he can help break that down, but I'm specifically asking for, for that. But again, I'm fine with whatever, but that doesn't address what I was talking about, but I'm fine.
So we have, the assignment is to include, include this as an upcoming, like an important central topic for the student cabinet or youth cabinet, I get the name wrong, and I understand, Dr. Moffett, that is different from what you were saying, but I heard you say that you're okay with that for now. I just want to check that that's right, because I think the alternative is we can vote, and we can have a motion for one, a motion for another, and we'll see which ones get, we could do both, we could do neither. I don't want to dictate what the outcome is. I just want us to have a clear process. Okay. So, so we'll move on with that. Any other assignments? Ms. Morosky?
Thank you, President Lindy. So I teased this a little earlier, so I'll formalize it. I'm unsure of exactly to whom or to where to make this assignment, whether it's administration, general counsel, health and safety, so I'm just going to make it, and then colleagues can help me maybe figure that one out. Again, my assignment is regarding the MOU for when that comes up again with Cincinnati Police Department. And I do think it bears repeating that, A, we don't have a contract per se with Cincinnati Police Department, nor are we paying these folks. So as the lone dissenter who isn't necessarily in favor of the program, I do think those pieces of information are important for people to know. But in the MOU, you members know, I've long had taken issue with it. I think it's very weak. We have no, little to no oversight. So I offer these suggestions, which again, have been offered by activists and others, you've heard these, I don't think they're new. But I'll be brief now and then, if there's longer discussion going forward, that'd be great. But one is that when an interaction occurs with a young person, a Cincinnati police officer, that parents are notified every time. Two, that the students are aware of their civil rights before they have these interactions with a police officer. Three, that the, you know, I don't, I don't know, I don't have the manual for the training that the police officers go through, you know, I trust that we have some idea of what that is. I hope we do. I don't. But all the information I've heard and received is that de-escalation tactics are not necessarily part of it. And so I would like to ask if the MOU has some language about de-escalation. So that's notifying parents, students aware of their civil rights, and de-escalation. Again, I don't know necessarily where that goes, but I'd just like to offer that.
So thank you, Ms. Morosky, for the proposed assignment. My recommendation, subject to feedback from others, would be that we actually assign that to policy committee to be worked on. It's not meant as punishment, Mr. Morosky.
It's fair.
To be able to work through where is it, what's the administration's recommendation, what are pros and cons, and you all come back with a proposed policy amendment that would do what you all figure out.
I like, I like that a great deal, particularly since Ms. Bolton's on there, I think that's good, you know? One of the, one of the presenters, or, you know, co-authors, myself, and then Dr. Moffett, of course, who's spoken quite a bit about it tonight as well regarding the youth voice, I think that's a good committee, happy to take it on.
And I want to, this is great, and I want to try to the same standards. This only works as an assignment if a majority of us like this idea. Are there any concerns from any board members about assigning this to the policy committee? Hearing none, we're going to assign it to the policy committee. There you go. Any other assignments? Okay, yes, Ms. Bolton?
Just a little bit of background regarding the administration continuing to work on the bus and van efforts and whatever. I just want to reiterate that within the work plan of the finance committee, transportation, especially the financial angle of transportation, finance committee will be working on that as well. Indeed, it will be on this week's agenda. The other, the other piece of that is the concept of the dedicated fleet for extracurricular and health checks and other things, as well as some vans for high schools, has been at least a topic to inform the public since last March, and it was part of the budget discussions that we were having. I would reiterate, one of the things we did find out is that there are those vans that do not require